All right, good evening. I'm going to call to order the June 12th Services and Safety Committee of the Issaquah City Council. I am Chris Ray. To my right is Councilmember Victoria Hunt and to my left is Councilmember Mariah Batiste. This evening, we have a number of items to cover. First, we're going to cover Agenda Bill 7600, which is an inter-local agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for maintenance and use of the High Point Trailhead. Agenda Bill 7617, inter-agency agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for incident management team participation. Agenda Bill 7394, the Park Strategic Plan. We have an informational item on the Senior Center, a Senior Center update. We also have an informational update on economic development and economic vitality by annual update. And I think that's it. So with that, let's get going. And we'll start with the inter-local agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for maintenance and use of High Point Trailhead. Ross Hoover, you're up.
Thank you. I appreciate you having us here tonight. This is a report on, an update on Agenda Bill 7600, inter-local agreement with the State of Washington Department of Natural Resources for the maintenance and operations of the High Point Trailhead area. So this agreement really represents a continuation of a long-term relationship with Department of Natural Resources at this site. The High Point Trailhead area has served really as a main hub for traffic coming and going from the High Point Trailhead area. That includes City of Issaquah Trails, but also Washington State Department of Natural Resources Trails. So this is the exhibit from the Agenda Bill to give you an idea of what area we're talking about. So you can see I-90 and the High Point exit listed there. And the rectangular white box to the left of that is the, is sort of represents the area we're talking about. I'm showing you this so you can see the relationship of City of Issaquah property, managed and owned property, which is anything above this white dotted line, so north of that white dotted line. Department of Natural Resources property is located south of that line. And so this, as you can see, is a key point at which people come and park and use and access and enjoy the trails on Tiger Mountain that are both managed by City of Issaquah and Department of Natural Resources. So this, as I said earlier, this really is a continuation of an agreement that we've had in place with Department of Natural Resources since 1993. And we have been jointly managing and operating this space since then. And so this is the next version of that relationship. So if anybody has any questions on this inter-local agreement?
Any questions?
Be happy to answer those.
Councilmember Hunt?
So thank you for the presentation and thank you for the information about how this is a continuation. Are there specific things that are updated or changed from the, from previously other than the timeline? What would be different about this agreement?
Good question. So the original agreement from 1993 really was a use permit and allowed Department of Natural Resources to access their trails through this site. And this really updates that. And so now it's formally an inter-local agreement. So that's one major change. Within the inter-local agreement, there are specific details and attributes that we call out and differentiate in terms of roles and responsibilities and clarify things a lot, a lot better. And so that we really know the roles of each entity and agency and can better manage the space in a more effective way. One thing, one thing in particular that Department of Natural Resources has been responsible for is the maintenance of the restroom facility, maintenance of the picnic shelter, maintenance of the parking lot area and trails and picnic tables in that space. And so that, that role continues. And so we really clearly talk about that in this inter-local agreement.
Okay. And that also is, is it a change for that service to have the $3,500?
Yeah, good question. So part of this inter-local agreement, one is to recognize roles, as I mentioned, but also responsibilities. And so part of that responsibility from the city's perspective is that Department of Natural Resources has been fully funding this maintenance of the site since 1993. And so in this ILA, we clearly break that responsibility in 50% by each agency. So the City of Issaquah, per their, their current contract is, will be responsible for $3,500, as will DNR. And so we'll share in that responsibility of the, of the maintenance at this site. One thing that's clear within the ILA as well is that from that $3,500 that will be funded through our operating funds, the city has a, has a role and a responsibility and quite honestly, a public desire to use this space in a, in a more formal way. So when people use the picnic shelter, for example, the city will manage that space and allow people to reserve that space and will charge a small fee to use the space. That will help offset the city's costs and make this a much more sustainable model going forward.
Councilmember Batiste?
Thank you for all that information. So the $3,500, just to clarify, that's new?
It is.
And that would go into effect July?
July 1st.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
Thank you.
And that, and those funds, we're not asking for additional funds. The city will, will commence booking of the picnic shelter, will, will use the space and activate the space in a new way and, and partner with agencies and partner with for-profits and nonprofits to offer a variety of programs and activities at this space that will produce revenue to help offset those expenses.
So from a, someone experiencing the trailheads, they won't see any difference. It's going to look the same tomorrow as it does today. It's going to feel the same tomorrow as it does today.
Exactly.
And so really, the only difference is a small increase in our financial contribution to cover the cost of maintenance.
Exactly.
And some small offset resulting from fees associated with the shelter.
Exactly. Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Hunt?
Well, building off of that question, that there will be a change though for people that have been using the picnic shelter, they will now have to pay a fee to use the picnic shelter. Is it a fee to reserve it or just to use it?
Good question. So for groups that, for more formal groups that are using the picnic shelter in a more formal way, for example, for reunions and birthday parties where people want to have the space as theirs and set aside for them for their activity, we will be able to provide that and meet that need and desire from the public. For those that don't want a formal gathering and want to, want to use the shelter, I think the question you're asking is informal groups, drop-in use. The shelter will be free for anybody to use as they wish when it's not reserved. And we, this is the same model we use in all of our parks. And really, it works quite well and, and really accommodates everybody's needs.
All right. Anything else? All right. So question is, should we recommend to the full council to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the inter-local agreement with the State Department of Natural Resources for maintenance and use of the High Point Trailhead? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we're going to go 3-0 on that and really no significant issues with that. Thanks, Ross. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
So will that be referred to the June 18th? Business survey?
Thank you. June 18th consent? June 18th consent?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Next up is inter-agency, no, it's not. It is. Agenda Bill 7617, inter-agency agreement with the Department of Natural Resources. They are our partner of choice today for incident management team participation. Brent Heath, Director of Public Works Operations. Welcome. Hey, Brent.
Thank you. Thank you. So the Agenda Bill 7617 that's before you tonight for consideration is in agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for reimbursement, essentially it's a vehicle for reimbursement for working with incident management teams. So by way of background, as you may recall from emergency management briefing, the City of Issaquah uses, utilizes an incident management team structure for responding to incidents within the City of Issaquah. And that structure is nearly identical to the same structure that's used by larger teams, state, state teams for fighting wildfires and national teams for wildfires, hurricanes and things along those lines. So this team structure allows us to address incidents. It also allows us to transition from local management capabilities to state or federal capabilities and resources should the need arise and then transition back into a local, local incident management of an event. So the agreement that we have before us tonight allows the City of Issaquah to work with the Department of Natural Resources actually working on their incident management teams, typically in a wildfire situation. And that allows us to do training, train for, training our staff, which comes from a number of different departments within the City of Issaquah and also Eastside Fire and Rescue. And typically what we've done in the past, we have shadowed with some of these teams. This agreement actually allows us to work directly with the teams and then provides for a reimbursement vehicle for staff's time and expenses while they're working on these, on these incident management teams. So it's fairly straightforward agreement, just essentially, again, this is a standard Department of Natural Resources incident management team agreement. And we're asking for authorization for the mayor to enter into this agreement with Department of Natural Resources.
Any questions for Brett? Councilmember Hunt?
You may have mentioned this, but are, is the City of Issaquah in other such relationships with other agencies for also sharing emergency management? Or is, will this be the first of such agreements?
So the City of Issaquah is also a member of the Washington State Mutual Aid System. We are also a signatory to the King County Regional Disaster Framework. So we have other resource and mutual aid agreements. This is, this is a little bit different in that it's not so much a mutual aid agreement as is a, an agreement to allow us to work directly with the, the DNR teams and then be reimbursed for, for time spent working with those teams. So a little bit different focus than the other mutual aid agreements we have.
There's a couple of questions. So do we see that this working together thing, I can see how it's a real benefit for DNR because we're going to be providing them resources during peak periods. What about staff development? Do we, do you perceive that this is an opportunity for our emergency management folks to, to grow and expand their capabilities?
Absolutely. And that's really the main focus of this agreement for our emergency management organization here. It, as I mentioned, we do do shadowing, which is a kind of working with the team and following them. This kind of, this, this agreement allows us to go beyond that and actually fill those positions on the team. And it is primarily for training and then they bring those experiences back, train other staff, work with our emergency management team. So it builds the strength of our capabilities and that's, that's really one of the main intents.
So do you foresee that if we move forward this, that we could be sending our folks across the state, across the country, across the world? What's the, what's the scope?
Typically across the state. It is northwest, so there are teams that go into Oregon occasionally, Idaho, but generally the state. And we're under, we have a couple of staff that are currently qualified to do that. And they are on an alternate basis, so they're not essentially being drafted by DNR. They are, it's an as, on an as-available basis.
That was really my next question. So we have some discretion over whether or not to let them go?
Correct.
Awesome. Anything else, guys? Councilmember Batiste?
Thank you for that. Could you just explain a little bit more about the type 3, type 2, the, the teams? And just give me a little bit more about that?
Sure. Absolutely. So the National Incident Management System created a typing, a, an incident typing system. So type 1 is the largest teams and they handle incidents of national significance. So hurricanes, multi-state flooding, sometimes they'll be called in on, to help out with wildfires as well, the very large wildfires. So those are your national significance teams. The type 2 teams are typically state-level teams and they will, they're, those are very involved in wildfire. So Washington State type 2 teams are going to be fighting Washington State wildfires. They can also be deployed to other states as well. And then we have type 3 teams. Those tend to be regional. So there's a Seattle Metro type 3 team, a Northwest type 3 team out of the Everett area, Snohomish County. There's also a type 3 team down in Pierce County. So there's type 3 teams, a number of type 3, excuse me, type 3 teams around the state. And then Issaquah is a, what we've been referring to as type 4 team. So that's a local, local incident management team. Our training is taking, our capabilities are really at the type 3 level with the training that we've had and the, and the staff that we have at this point. But type 4 is your local incident.
Okay. Thank you. I can say some clarification for me. Thank you.
How many people do we currently have on staff that this would affect?
We currently have, I think there's, we have two at this present time.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hunt?
I think this is related to the staff development, but I noticed also that there's discussion of the software that the, the DNR uses and that the city is wishing to eventually transfer also to be using that same software. And so I wondered if you could just explain a little bit about the city's plans in that regard with the E-I suite?
E-I suites? Yes, absolutely. So there's actually a couple of software pieces that are used by incident management teams. There's E-I suites, which is mentioned in there, and also ROSS, which is their resource ordering system. So the personnel that we have that are credentialed would be entered into the ROSS system and that's how they, the process by which they would get called up. The E-I suites is a resource management software system that's used by the state teams as well. And we already have that software actually, but this allows us to work with that software on the teams and get some additional experience with it. So our goal is to be able to seamlessly transition between our team and any other incoming teams and then back again. And so we're endeavoring to use the same systems that they use.
Excellent. No, I, I blew it on the last one. Is there anybody in the public who would like to talk about the inter-local with DNR around incident management? All right. Thanks, Brett. I think that's great. More of the questions? Right. All right. So all in favor of recommending to the full council to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute an inter-agency agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for city inter, incident management team personnel participation in DNR's type 2 incident management teams during wildfire events? Say aye.
Aye.
18th consent?
Consent.
Consent?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I could.
Ready.
All right. Let me introduce you. All right. Next up is the Park Strategic Plan presented by Jennifer Fink. And you don't look like Jennifer.
Jeff Watling, Parks and Recreation Director with the City of Issaquah. Yeah, sorry, I was so excited for this. I jumped up a little early. Before I jump into the Park Strategic Plan though, I want to recognize Ross Hoover. Many here in the audience probably know, I'm not sure if you do yet, Ross is headed off to a new opportunity at the end of this month, which is really disappointing news for us, but exciting news for Ross. Ross is going to be the next Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Tuolleton, Oregon. So he and his family are headed down to Oregon. I just want to recognize Ross and certainly give a public thank you. 19 years of service here with the City of Issaquah, has done great things. I think Issaquah is better off in many ways from the public service that, that you've given this community over 19 years. And again, exciting to see someone launch their professional career into bigger, brighter things. But thank you, Ross, for just the work you've done. It's been great working with you these last two years. Really going to miss, really going to miss him in a big way. Yeah. So we've got this Park Strategic Plan we've been working on and excited. I know last May, had a chance to present this before you. Tonight, we're here seeking your recommendation as, as we begin to move this forward. As I said in May, this really represents a really big effort that's, that's happened, both from staff, the park board, as, it's really serving as a steering committee, a lot of great feedback and work from our community and citizens. I would be remiss if I don't certainly recognize Jennifer Fink and the work that she's done. She's been a great partner in this effort as we've moved this forward. We have several park board members here, Brad Book, Linda Whitworth, and Ruben Nieto are all here. Again, as the steering committee, they've really done some great work in shepherding all of, all of this. Some of these slides are familiar. I'm not going to go through them in terms of our, the presentation we had in May, but certainly worth highlighting, we were very intentional in our approach in this effort. This document that's before you represents in a lot of ways, a new approach to looking at our, and planning and having some intentionality with our public parks, trails, and open space system. It started with a very intentional approach to how we went through this. Public engagement was, was really foundational in this effort. We had multiple phases of engagement as we went through this process. Anyone who takes a look at this, at this calendar that's within the strategic plan will see really the time and the touches. And I think pretty much every month for the last, I'd say 14 months, we had this as an item with the park board as we went through community engagement responses to each chapter of, of the document and really began to build this as a, as a framework. I'll highlight in the, towards these latter steps of the document, since our meeting on May 14th, the park board met on May 17th and gave their unanimous recommendation for this document and for council adoption of this. We did have some modifications within the document, none of them substantive. Really, they were some great feedback that we got through our citizen engagement. We had this draft document, if you remember, open for four weeks and available for the community to respond to. Some great suggestions about formatting and, and reformatting a few things. You also may recall through the Central Issaquah adoption process, the Green Necklace has now been folded into this document as its own chapter. So chapter seven of the document you have in your agenda reflects and is consistent with that action that came from the adoption of the Central Issaquah Plan. Engagement itself, I mentioned earlier, highlights really the, the core, the foundation of, of this work. The two phases that we did as we developed the plan really touched on both a big picture aspirational set of questions to really find out what this community, how does this community use its park system? How does it want to use its parks, trails, and open space system? Phase 2 really focused on that check-in back with our community. Here's what we heard in that first phase. Here's some strategic projects, some priorities that are beginning to take shape. What's not on this slide is really what we consider the third phase of a, of public engagement that we just wrapped up, and that was the actual document itself. We really wanted the chance for all of the respondees, all of our stakeholder groups to have a chance to see the draft documented in some form, in its form. So for four weeks, we had that draft available for the community to respond to and make sure this resonates. From that engagement, we really landed on these five themes, in a lot of ways, priorities. The strategic projects that come through this document are really built upon these themes. Most every project of the strategic projects touch on, touches on at least two and up to four of these themes and priorities. Those, these priorities being placemaking, connectivity, innovative action, and how we approach our work, a vital environment, and active lifestyles. I thought it was rather reaffirming as we're, as we're on the tail end of this work and as the citywide strategic plan is underway and really engaging the community at a little higher elevation in terms of planning. But as we had the charrette just last week, I thought it was very reaffirming that these priorities and themes have a lot of continuity with, with some of the themes and priorities that are beginning to take shape from that work. I mentioned the strategic projects earlier. This, this map represents really the, the beginning of that chapter in mapping all 51 of these projects. We thought it was very important, really early on in our effort with the park plan, to look at the geographic distribution we have of our system. We spent a lot of time not only looking at how the system's distributed and where we may have gaps, we also took a very intentional look and it's in the, reflected in the document. What are the barriers that exist within, the physical barriers that exist within our community? And how can our public spaces help to bridge those barriers? It's great to see in this type of a visual that these, these projects really have a great distribution and a great geographic balance throughout the system. A number of the projects, as I mentioned earlier, aren't identified as a site yet. There's additional public engagement we'll want to do before we identify where they'll be on a site, but they're still listed on the table as a project. One example of that is an off-leash dog park. We'll be starting a public engagement effort later this summer to, really the first phase of that engagement will be site selection and, and really going through an engagement effort on how and where we want to cite that. Another key element of this park plan, along with these strategic projects, they're, they're not just random projects that don't have a relationship with one another. There's a number of corridors that, that this plan really sets to visualize and call out. A lot of these corridors are, quite frankly, confirmation of a lot of vision that's, that's taken place in this community and, and really hopefully brings a visual to that, to those desires. And I think one in particular really resonates with that, and that's the idea of this creek corridor. This, this idea and this opportunity that Issaquah has as a community to create an amazing, compelling, and really anchor corridor that stretches from our southern border at Squawk Valley Park all the way up to Lake Sammamish State Park. And, and this map is a great reflection when you look at the public lands that we already own. The opportunity's there really, and we see through this first phase of strategic projects in this plan, we've really had a chance to start to connect those and connect those in a more meaningful way. I think another real compelling part of this corridor is this corridor has a relationship with so many neighborhoods and so many different areas within Issaquah. From our residential areas to the south, Sycamore and the like, Old Town has a strong relationship with this corridor. And how, with Old Town visioning, how can this corridor, how can these public spaces play a supportive role in that vision? It touches on Central Issaquah. This corridor is part of the Green Necklace as well as obviously a very distinctive relationship with Lake Sammamish State Park. So I think just another example of the opportunity we have as a community as we lean into our future with the park plan. The Green Necklace, I mentioned earlier that this is now a chapter within the, the park plan. That was a, I think a very positive collaborative effort that not only the park board was very involved in, but the planning- involved in, but the Planning Policy Commission, the PPC, really had a very central role in that. It was a great collaborative effort interdepartmentally, bringing Public Works Engineering in with ourselves at Parks and working directly with Development Services Department. I think a real collective collaborative effort in trying to bring some definition to the necklace and what the necklace means, not only for how it supports Central Issaquah, but really the reality that this Green Necklace is a real anchor part of our system and could have a very supportive role outside the neighborhoods of the Central Issaquah area as well. The strategic projects, you saw them in a map form. The document certainly goes through and gives definition to each of those projects, not only in relating these projects to the themes and the priorities, but also as we went through and prioritized those projects against one another, they were put into three different buckets, near-term, a midterm, and a long-term bucket, that really tried to give us some prioritization for how we want to now begin to tackle these projects and start looking at both financially and strategically how we want to start accomplishing these efforts. As I mentioned earlier, this table really reflects well that each of these projects touches on multiple themes. You'll see also with the icons that a lot of many of these projects really, through that innovative action theme, have a great opportunity for partners and partnerships in getting that work done. So should we adopt this plan? As we think about adopting this plan, here's the exciting thing about the plan. The plan doesn't do anything by itself. So what does implementation look like? And I really can't emphasize that enough. I think we really saw that as a priority of you as council as we were tasked with doing this work, and something we get really excited about is this is not a, it's not an ends itself. This is really the starting line. And this idea of constantly thinking about how is this going to be put into action was very important as we did this work. To succinctly take, to think about implementation, I think it's important to realize and remember that this strategic plan really reflects strategic, long-term thinking. The plan really represents the thinking of the long view. The implementation is really all about how we apply, how we begin applying that thinking to the, to real life, to our current workload, our current work items. That application of that thinking is not going to just happen once. It's really through multiple actions. The table below that's in the, that's in the plan tries to graphically represent this and reflect this, that this park strategic plan, easy for me to say, is really the beginning. And it's intended to inform so much work. It's intended, that thinking is intended to be applied to our comprehensive plan, to the five-year CIP that's going to be updated next year, to funding strategies. And as we begin looking at and thinking through multiple budgets, so many other city planning efforts, we get excited that this is going to be implemented through those other city planning efforts. Some examples of that, really, right now, here and now, the Gilman Boulevard study, as we've already had conversations with Public Works Engineering, and we're really excited about how this work is going to help inform that work from a bike pad and how Gilman has an opportunity to really relate to a number of our public spaces and park spaces. The conversation that we just had about our relationship with DNR and the Lake Tradition property. This plan really sets forth a vision of master planning with DNR and with King County for that site and how that site relates. The CIP update, as I mentioned earlier, are all examples of how we want to use this plan. We really want to bring this plan into action. Capital projects will obviously be informed by this. The dog park, as I mentioned earlier, will be work that we want to initiate right away and bring this document into, into our current thinking. How we measure success, as we laid this out in the plan, we really see this series of questions as being questions we want to ask ourselves. We want to ask ourselves next year. We want to ask ourselves three years from now, four years from now, as we begin thinking about updating this plan. And really, all of those questions are really framed around, are we using it? And that's going to be an important measuring tool for us in terms of, is this plan just sitting on a shelf or is this plan effectively informing our capital projects, reflecting the interdepartmental work and the collaborative work we're doing on other projects? Are we seeing this work produced in some of the capital projects that are being done? Another big part of how we measure success is knowing there's going to be the new shiny bobble that's going to show up a couple of years from now. And the new idea that isn't reflected in this plan, because there's always new ideas. The toolkit that was put into this plan was really hoping to build in that ability to respond to new opportunities, but respond to those new opportunities in a disciplined way, to have those new opportunities go through the same screening that these projects within this plan went through. So I think a key part of measuring the success of this plan, again, is seeing it, seeing it at work and in its work. So with that, next steps, just a couple that I want to outline and then certainly open it up for any questions you have. We are currently scheduled, the goals and policies component of this plan is going to the Planning Policy Commission on Thursday, June 14th. Jennifer Fink will be presenting that to Planning Policy Commission on Thursday. Right now, the plan is scheduled to come back to council on June 18th for adoption. Another next step as we begin to think about 2019 budget process will be, there's some funding in the 2018 capital budget around master planning. And once this product is adopted, I'd love to engage in a policy conversation with council and leadership around what, which projects we might want to begin to address first in terms of some site-specific master planning work. So with that, thank you.
Questions? Let's remember Hunt. Oh, no, we get to ask questions first.
Lots of questions on this one. So on the timeline, I noticed that there is a, there's also a CEPA checklist step and the Planning Policy Commission, which will be this Thursday, and then review back to council with their findings of fact. And so I just wondered about how that timeline is going to work and if they're really going to be able to make changes if either of those, if either of those groups require changes or make suggestions that you would want to include.
It's really tight, isn't it?
Yeah.
So yeah, should there be substantive changes, then, yeah, the plan would need to come back at a later date, either July 2nd meeting or other.
Okay. Is there a reason?
I know as leadership, as council leadership met and discussed, it was a desire to try and make this June 18th date. So we're, calendar's trying to reflect that goal, but you're absolutely right. Should there be substantive changes, that would need to, the schedule would need to be adjusted.
Okay. Seems, is there a reason that it couldn't be given more time other than, I guess, the leadership had suggested this timeline?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then I had a question about, so I have some questions about sort of the layout of the document. One is that there's the conclusions, and then there's the Green Necklace. And to me, it reads a little, it's a little jarring. I like the conclusion, but then you get through the conclusion and it's kind of like the ends, and then there's a seven, that was six, and then there's a seven, and then there's the acknowledgements. So I wondered if you could explain that.
Yeah, yeah, agree. It is a little awkward as we, but intentional. And here was the reasoning, here's the thought behind it, is that Green Necklace work, and when you look at the Green Necklace work in its entirety, a number of those elements in those projects are public works projects. It's not, the necklace work and the elements of the necklace and really the elevation of the necklace, it's a little more, it's a very different elevation than the rest of the park strategic plan. It was hard to find a place to weave it into the body of the plan with such a different elevation and such a different context. So it was felt that maybe the, a lot of different ways to do it, but the thought was, let's reference it within the body of the plan and reference it that it's there in Chapter Seven, it is a part of this adopted document, but it's also, yeah, it's just, it's at a different, a different level, a little more granular.
Is that Green Necklace also going to live in other places? I know it is referred to, and there's a map that's in this document as well as in the visions, and then there's also references in the comp plan to the Green Necklace, and there's references in code to the definition of the Green Necklace. And so I'm just wondering how much of those other references are going to be updated based on this, which is a much more extensive definition and much more expansive plan of what the Green Necklace is.
Yeah, great question. So I know as Central Issaquah, Visions was adopted, the description is consistent with this, with this piece or with this body of work. I'm also aware that there has been conversation about knowing within, as you read the Green Necklace introduction, it speaks to a recommendation by Development Services staff and park staff that some of the Central Issaquah design standards be updated. So that's work that will happen, so this, this body of work will be reflected in a variety of different places.
Okay. Do you, do we have a sense of the timeline for those updates?
I have to ask Jennifer, have you heard from?
Not yet.
Not yet, but we will find out where that is in the docket.
Yeah. I ask because this has a lot more explanation of what it is and plans and a lot more definition. And so I think it would be good to make sure that it's mirrored throughout. So if a developer is looking at what the plan is for the Green Necklace and they see one paragraph, they know that there's a lot more.
Something they can hear, yeah.
Yeah, they know there's a lot more somewhere else. So I, so that was the reason for that question. I also had a question about the prioritization. So prioritization is based on a number of different things, including that it is low-hanging fruit, and I wondered if you could explain that. And my reason for that question is because I would think that low-hanging fruit kind of is prioritized just on the basis of being low-hanging fruit. Kind of, it's done because it's low-hanging fruit.
Yeah. So what you're referencing is we had the scoring matrix that is on pages 96, 97, 98 was the filter that helped to inform putting those projects in either near-term, midterm, or long-term buckets. One of those six criteria, criteria number five, was low-hanging fruit. And you're right, in the context of the other criteria, we wanted to give, we wanted to score points for a project that had the ability to be addressed right away, that we felt that there was a, in that filter of multiple project, or multiple priorities, a project should be given some points if either through partnership or through smaller scale of work could be accomplished soon. So.
Okay. Right? And?
If I could add one more thing, because I think this was important too in that. Knowing, again, the breadth of community feedback we got, if we were to set low-hanging fruit as the only criteria, we could, we could be spending a lot of time on low-hanging fruit, but maybe not getting to the work that this community wants. So it was trying to put it into context with the other priorities.
On the, and then, so the, there's the priorities, there's also the near-term, midterm, long-term. And I appreciate how much detail is in the plan, and I wondered about these. So there's near-term, and then there's sometimes a little tab that's like, there's a big tab, and then there's a little tab, and the little tab has a facet with a different timeline. And so I wondered if you could explain that because, and my question about that is that a lot of these, I assume, have, even if they're near-term work, there's going to be longer-term or midterm parts. There's upkeep, and there's updates and those sorts of things. So I just wondered what those other facets are sort of calling out.
Yeah, I will give some examples. If there's a page, oh, there's one right there. Hillside Park has a.
There's a specific example, Hillside Park, yeah. That's the one I'm most concerned about, actually.
Yep, yep. It's a great, it's a great example. So yeah, a number of these have, they do have layers. So in some cases, we might recognize, you know what, the master planning needs to start right away. And depending on the result of that master plan, it might require, there might be phased investment, phased improvements that are done, that some might happen in near-term, some might become midterm. I think Lake Samamish State Park's another great example. We have a, we have work going on right now with state parks and master planning that work. But given the size and scale of a lot of those capital, the capital investments might be happening in the midterm. So we're trying to recognize, though maybe the capital investment might be happening later, there's near-term work that should happen, should take place to make that opportunity a reality. Does that help?
It helps, definitely. For the Hillside Park example, it's under near-term, but it has mid facets. For that example, I don't see the explanation of what specifically is, so there is a full-site master planning will be near-term project, connectivity maybe mid to long-term. So is that?
Yeah, yeah, great question. So Hillside Park, what we're trying to identify in this plan is the park in its entirety. So the park in its entirety, when you think of all of those, boy, I wish, 30 acres, big area, it encompasses a cemetery, it encompasses a small neighborhood park piece, incorporates opportunities along the hillside for trails. So as we do that near-term master planning, when you look at all of those elements, there will likely be near and midterm capital investments made on all of those, all of those public uses within that, within that park.
Is it, is that one then saying that the planning will be near-term, but the actual improvements will be midterm?
Yeah. Well, and I would say this, specifically, a little foreshadowing for, as we're looking at the 2019 budget, what we would hope for and see opportunity is to do near-term master planning and master planning all of those elements collectively. We have a cemetery board who's certainly reminding us that there's some investments needed at the cemetery. We have a public outreach happen that a couple of years ago with the park and showing interest in some investments in the park, growing community. in some investments in the park, growing community interest in trails. We would like to have funding available to do master planning next year and some Phase One capital investment next year as well, and then probably have future phase work happen in future years.
And then the, the different placemaking, connectivity, those different things, they don't, they aren't priorities, they're in an order, but it's not a priorities order, like?
Correct, yeah.
They're just all?
Correct.
Okay.
Got anything else?
Not for right now.
We can come back.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tis?
Thank you, thank you for this great presentation and overview, and I'll speak a little bit more about that later. I had a question on slide 49. It gives the strategic project list, the 51 projects, then also talks about the operational strategic projects. So that, it looks like the operational projects are not yet, are they really meant to go side by side as you're, as you're going through the projects and you're sort of developing those four pieces as you're going? Could you speak a little bit more to that?
Yeah, I'm really glad you mentioned that page, thank you. Yeah, these were four projects that we see strategically, nice use of the word, but not fitting really as capital projects, but we really see them as opportunities for us to address really in the, in the near-term. These are more projects that have either a, much more of an operational element to them than thinking of them as a capital investment. So those four projects being, looking at our recreation facilities. So as we, this, this strategic plan really looked at our parks, open space, and trails, our recreation facilities, the community center, the senior center, our rental facilities, the community itself has, has grown geographically since those were invested, so doing some strategic planning around recreation facilities. How do we either look long-term at investments within those spaces, is there need for additional recreation facilities as we move forward? So that's one of the operational recommendations. The other is looking at an urban forest management plan, knowing that 1,300 of our 1,600 acres is, we're stewarding it and managing it as natural resource, open space. We really see an opportunity for us to look at how we're, what's the current state of that urban forest? How can we most effectively manage that urban forest? There are partners in the region that we could work with on that plan, looking at things such as health of that forest. Where are we seeing invasives? Where are we most vulnerable to invasives? How do we begin to more strategically address those invasives? So wrapping that work up into an operational goal, we really saw as a priority. The other two were, how do we incorporate more standardized or universal approach to park signage and wayfinding? As we think of this as a more cohesive park system and set a vision for a park system, we really think there's an opportunity to look at reinforcing that through standardized wayfinding signage and park signage. And then the, the fourth one is something we've already been having some conversations with the mayor, mayor's office on, is how do we initiate or think of creating a neighborhood grant, park grant program, if you will, and invite neighborhoods to apply for, a number of, a number of other cities do this, where it's just another way of infusing community engagement and community work and community resources into more smaller investments within our park system. So none of those really had a capital, we couldn't really put that on a map, but as we engaged with the, with the community, they really became four, four needs that resonated pretty loudly with the community.
So right now, those are at a strategic level, and you'll be building out plans alongside the projects as you start to work on those?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a much more elegant way to say it than I just did, yeah.
And then you spoke about new opportunities that might fall outside of the 51 projects that are listed here. So would there be a process for vetting something that, that would come about? Or would, would that be, would part of that be sort of laying that side by side with the projects that are out there and seeing, or maybe there's something more extensive that the group has talked about doing?
Great question. So on page 92 of the document, we've, we reference this area called the planning, a planning tool for future projects. It, it then goes on to subsequent pages to lay out two phases, a two-phased checklist approach that any, that new, that next new idea, that next new thing would go through those two filters, those two checklists. Those coincidentally are the same checklists that these 51 projects went through. So it's just, it would be a way for us to, to be nimble, right, as those new opportunities come up, but also be disciplined in making sure we're looking at those new ideas with the same lens that these other projects went through.
And the, I think I've got some other questions, but I can pause after this and give Chris a chance too as well. What would be the impact? I have the same question, actually, that Councilmember Hunt did in regard to, we've got the SEPA checklist and the PPC public hearing. So if there were changes, what would be the impact if this needed to be given a little more time, if any?
Yeah, so if it, if it needed more time, then I guess our approach would be, yeah, do we either bring this back, bring it back to committee for discussion and then to council for adoption? If it's really substantive change, if it's, I don't know the right gradient, if it's moderately substantive change, then maybe it goes to one of the July city council meetings for, for discussion and adoption. I understand, yeah, some of the same sequencing as some of our, let's say, concern, but we understand the, the compression.
Right, but, but in terms of impact, you don't, you don't see impact if, if it were to be pushed out just into July? I'm just trying to understand if?
No, I see what you're saying. No, other than as we begin getting closer to 2019 budget formation, you know, how we want to use this as a tool to inform the budget would be the, probably the nearest impact.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes, excuse me.
There are all sorts of questions tonight.
All right. Good stuff.
I want to talk about operationalizing this, because I think it's, it's a good plan. So what have you done differently, or will you do differently in the way that Parks Department operates because you have this plan?
It's an outstanding question. So I think first and foremost, it really sets, it sets intentionality in how we approach park investments, how we approach our park planning and development team, how we build our five-year CIP. As we even, as we get into specific projects, specific park projects, it helps to really be the foundation for what public engagement, or even how we frame the public engagement of any specific project. I think as well, on the park maintenance, the park operation and maintenance side, I think this really, in terms of operationally, I think it, it helps us to prioritize where our limited resources are going there. We've been doing some subsequent, while this was happening, some work with our park ops team in terms of park resource management. So this, an adopted strategic plan that takes this intentionality, or this intentional of a look, will certainly have an opportunity for us to take a similarly intentional approach to how we're maintaining and stewarding these public spaces. I think it also just reaffirms some of the, our discussions with our partners. I think this also, as we look at strategic acquisitions and the opportunities that are presented to us as a city for potential acquisitions, it helps us to prioritize those and see where they fit into the system. So there's three examples, just off the top of my head, there's probably others.
So we spent a lot of time of late working on the citywide strategic plan. How does this integrate with support aligned with the citywide plan?
Great, great question. I think it does so really, really well. I think we're talking about strategic plans on slightly different elevations. I think as the citywide strategic plan is really looking at the competing values and competing priorities of all city services, as stewardship or investment into our public parks, trails, and open space system, wherever that sort of fits within the strategic plan, this becomes that supporting strategy for any of that work, whether it's, again, stewardship work, service delivery work, or investment work. So it was, like I said earlier, very reaffirming to see as the, you know, thousand-plus responses from citizen engagement with the city strategic plan, what looks like the priorities and themes that are coming out of that work, look and feel immensely familiar with what we heard the community saying about its park system, so.
So I think the plan does an absolutely spectacular job of outlining our portfolio of park assets, if you will, and investment strategy. Where do you touch on the services that the Parks Department provides today, provides tomorrow, provides five years from now?
Yeah, so sort of the recreation services, recreation programs and deliveries, that's where, within that operational item, that recreation facilities, recreation strategic plan, we'd really see that happening within that work, within that effort.
So you, and this is interesting, so you draw the distinction between a park is a physical thing, you know, it's a piece of land, and a recreation is a service or an event?
Service and, and facilities. I mean, it honestly could, it could fall on either one. It certainly seemed as we, as we set off on this journey, getting a intentional and more cohesive vision for our public infrastructure, our parks, open space, and trails were really the focus of this, of this work.
And going forward, what do you see is the process for continuing the public engagement and updating, refining, enhancing the plan?
Yeah, great, great question. I see it happening a couple of ways. I see that happening as this sets into motion any and all of our more site-specific planning efforts. There'll be a public engagement element to any and all of that site-specific work. We will also, I think the park board will remain and continue to function as a steering committee, if you, if you will, with this work. And as, as that moves forward, this document, as we've said all along, tries to set that 20-year vision, but we're going to be updating it every five years. So five years from now, we'll be going through a similar process. Hopefully, maybe not as comprehensive, given the new approach, but there'll be another, another public engagement more on the strategic level with our park system at that, at that time as well.
Then my final question really deals with, deals with the PPC meeting that's coming up. What are you asking them to opine on, or what, what's their, what's their charge? What's the question, the question you're asking them to answer?
As, as that body looks at the comprehensive plan and the policies within the comprehensive plan, it's the goals and policies section of this document. So we're not asking them to look at the document in its entirety, it's really the goals and policy section of, of this that they are required and asked to give their recommendation and support for.
So the goals and policy are aligned to the comprehensive plan?
Correct.
I think I'm good. Any other questions? Councilmember Hunt?
In the, in the intervening five years until the next update, are there going to be online ways or ways, ways for people to get in touch with you and let, let you know what they're thinking of, how, especially since there's these measures of success? And so I'm wondering, I think it would be good to have check-ins with the public however possible, so I'm wondering what your plan is on that front.
I completely agree, and I think whether it's utilizing the tool that we've certainly learned to love through this process, Peak Democracy, and the opportunity that gives us for really reaching out and getting some immediate feedback, I see that as a, as a tool and an opportunity. I think as we, again, are engaging in whether site-specific work or, or sort of the more global, how are we doing level, I don't have it specifically laid out, but I think there's a number of opportunities we'll have to be able to, to do that. This, and if, as I was saying earlier, with this being and intending to be such an actionable document, my hope is that, that engagement's never going to be that far away in terms of our access and our desire to get feedback from, from the community in terms of how, how this is working for us as a community, not just us as a department.
And then I have some specific questions on the strategic projects by priority, which is on page 73. And really, my questions are kind of to get a sense for how these are decided, because as it mentions, a lot of projects inherently touch on a lot of these priorities, and then there are dots assigned, there's a dot with a ring around it for the focus, I think, the main one, and then there's the other dots. And so, for example, with the Hillside acquisitions, it doesn't have that marked as connectivity. So connectivity is connect our parks and public spaces to make a unified system that serves the entire city and beyond. And so I would think that Hillside acquisitions would, would meet that connectivity.
If there's a recreational trail element to it, yes, absolutely. Yeah, you're right.
Okay, so, but it, it doesn't have it. So, so I just, I'm wondering why some, why some don't have that? And I understand that it's complicated, because they all probably have a little bit of everything, but...
That's a great point. I think an important point of emphasis is the Hillside acquisition certainly, as that went through the vetting process, is a near-term, high priority in terms of strategic need for addressing.
Okay. And then I'm also going to touch one more time on Hillside Park, which is, which is there, and which, this is kind of a question about the, what it currently is versus what it could be, and I, I think that's, this is another part of the complexity of ranking things, but to, so I wondered if you could talk about that, because I think some of these have the potential, probably also with my other example with the Hillside acquisitions, it has the potential to increase connectivity. If we haven't acquired it, then currently it doesn't increase connectivity. But sort of similar with a lot of these parks, they could increase, for example, active lifestyles if they're underperforming in that category now. And so I wondered how you, how you rank these, taking into account potential versus what they are now.
So I think what's important to realize in our sequence, as, as these projects were identified, they were, they were scored and ranked before we necessarily said, all right, what dots directly apply or not? So whether... So, so whether the dots didn't necessarily have as big of impact as scoring them did. I think to your example of Hillside, yeah, there's a, though, my understanding is a number of years ago, there was a degree of community engagement that, that really focused on the park itself, the, the small area up above Hillside Park. I think there remains some community engagement around what, what scale of activation does that neighborhood want in that park? And so we didn't try and identify what we felt as the activation level was going to be. We really think is a great example of using public engagement. We think that public engagement with that neighborhood is going to be imperative to help determine and define what level of activation do they want as, within that park. So as we define these, as we tried to, and it's why, in some ways, the funding and discussions of funding become a latter conversation, a later conversation as well, is we didn't want to try and estimate a cost on a project such as that before we have that degree of public engagement. But one thing we do know, and I think it came from the community outreach and, and certainly our staff perspective, is there's an opportunity there at Hillside Park to, to further activate that. Now let's engage with the public and figure out what scale that is.
And then my last question is, has, I know that the PPC worked with the Parks Board on the Green Necklace as part, I know that they worked on it more as part of the visions. I don't know if they worked on it as part of the, sort of coming at it from the perspective of the Parks Plan. And so I wondered if you could just talk a little bit about what, because we have this issue with the, with the PPC seeing it less than a week before the council will potentially have it come before the council for approval, if you could talk a little bit about the PPC's previous engagement or previous chances to look at this?
To look at the park plan in its entirety?
Or comments on, is there, was there any?
As a body, they weren't. As individual residents, they were, I think, fully aware, and as we talked with the Green Necklace, of the strategic plan effort that was going on, but Park Board was really serving as the steering committee of that, of that work.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Batiste?
So a couple more questions. One that just popped up as we were talking about the, the strategic projects, the urban forest, is tree, tree canopy, trying to, I can't talk, tree canopy, citywide plan, is that, was that discussed as part of that? Would that be part of that urban forest planning?
Urban forest management plan, it could be.
Or is that anywhere else within?
It, it could be. That's, that's likely where it would fit. We would want to, if that is something we want to do, and if funding is made available for that, we would want to scope, we'd want to identify who the partner is that we'd want to work with on that, and determine what the scope of that, that effort is. Not that it has to be done this way, but in, in a prior jurisdiction where I worked, we partnered with Forterra as a green city. They have a green cities program, so Green Kent was initiated. That effort began with the, really this urban forest plan, this management plan, that then set into action, really identifying state of the, of the urban forest, what's its current health, but it focused primarily, and most of them focus on public land, the, the public urban forest. If, if we as a city wanted to take a broader look at the total tree canopy or our total tree canopy goals, that could be something we could put into the scope of that work.
Okay. I know, we've just, we've definitely heard that come up before, and something that, the King County Conservation District, that group works with cities to develop tree canopy planning and that kind of thing, so that's where that question came from. The, let's see, with the SEPA checklist, in, in addition to the questions we're asking about PPC, do you, could you speak a little bit more about what you think might be coming down the pike, just in terms of, of that, just in terms of a timing perspective?
So that's a non-project SEPA, the public comment period, in fact, Jennifer, I don't know if you want to come up and, I'll try and get these dates right. The public comment period closes at the tail end of this week. There hasn't been any public comment yet.
Okay.
So as a non-project SEPA, it's anticipated that that determination will be, will be out prior to Monday.
Okay. And then my final question is just, in terms of engagement from the community, were there any surprises? Like what was maybe the biggest surprise or interesting topic that came forward that maybe wasn't on the radar screen?
Wow.
It's a tough question.
That is a tough one. I should have a pat answer for that, but I don't. You know, I don't know if this falls under the category of surprise, but I think more that, while Issaquah's been headed in the right direction for, you know, 30-plus years, and not, you know, sort of a surprise that a city that hasn't taken this sort of a strategic plan approach with its park system, this community's done, and city, and council, and staff have done really good work, because this, I think, more than anything, was built upon, was building upon that, that prior work. So there were no, I don't, you know, surprises in terms of new elements or new items, new needs, no. I think it, again, confirmed what we've built upon, and it also confirmed that we have a community that wants a city park system that's a little more modernized and has a diversity of elements within it. But again, I, that was loud and clear, but, you know, was that a surprise? No, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Anything else? Anybody in the public like, or the audience like to, to comment? All right, any, any discussion on this one? We, we covered a lot of, a lot of material here. Councilmember Hunt? I got a sequence here.
Right, okay. First, I just wanted to say, I, I think this is a really thorough document, it's very clear way forward. I know a lot of hard work has gone into it from the public and the Parks Board and the staff, and so I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who worked so hard on this. And I think it's also just a very visually appealing, nice layout, and I love all the photos and looking through it. And I'm going to say a few things that are a little critical, but I also, just overall, I know this represents a lot of hard work, and overall, I really think it is a, a good So firstly, I think that the, having the timeline, have this go to planning policy with less than a week before we see it, because there's the whole Green Necklace, and there's a lot of detail in there, and they've just gone through the whole process of doing the central Issaquah visions, which includes the Green Necklace components, and trying to think of how the, how the, the overall planning of the central Issaquah area relates to the natural spaces and to the parks, and I, I think that, I think that giving them, having, having the sequence be that they get it, and then there isn't really enough time to make substantial changes, I would, I would have preferred that they be given more of an opportunity to, if they want to make more changes, that it would be, then staff would have those, that time to consider those changes. So I, I think that, especially since the Green Necklace is in there, and especially since they work on a lot of the same sorts of things as the Parks Board, but just looking at it from a different angle, and looking at it from more of the policy angle, I think that they could have some feedback, which it would be good to incorporate. I personally don't like that the conclusion comes before the Green Necklace, because I think the Green Necklace is an important part of the plan, and to me, to conclude before you get to the Green Necklace makes it really stand out as not part of the plan. And I, I think it is different, but I don't know that it needs to be so different that it sits completely after the rest of the plan. I also, just looking at how things were scored, I know it's, I, I worked in land management and, and ecology, and I know that it's really hard to score, score things like this, because there's, there's so many things that are important and valuable. At the same time, I think that the low-hanging fruit category being equal to things like operational sustainability and urgency, I, I don't, to me, I don't understand why low, low hanging, something being low-hanging fruit would be scored to the same, with the same weight as something being urgent, because to me, it seems like if it's low-hanging fruit, that'll get done first anyway. And actually, there is a comment in the document that sometimes things that are scored really high probably won't get done because they're difficult to do, and that's, that's kind of how I see the low-hanging fruit thing, is that it will kind of factor into the scoring just by, by something being easy to do will get done first. I, I do think that there could be more work potentially also in our code, but maybe here as a starting place about the tree canopy and the urban forest, it's something that the community seems to really be interested in, and it's something that has come up as part of the strategic plan, and so I think maybe as that strategic plan comes forward, we'll have more ideas and maybe in further iterations, but I would like to see more of that, because it seems like a, it seems like something that's important to the community, and I, I also think it's important. And, oh, I just wanted to, just to add on that prioritization, I, I know it's difficult, and I also know if you ask two people, they'll probably prioritize things differently, so that's just my prioritization, I know there's lots of different ways to look at this. I appreciate the near-term, midterm, long-term, the facets, I think, is, could be helpful, I think it, it could be helpful as long as it's clearly defined what is near-term and the long-term facets, and I just would want to make sure that, just because it has a long-term facet, doesn't mean the whole thing sort of slips into that long-term category. And it does seem like there is intentionality there, I just would like to make sure that those timelines are clear. And that's the, that's the end of my comments, but I just wanted to say again that I think this is really good planning, really good step forward, and I think, again, thank you to everyone who worked on it.
Councilmember Batiste?
Thank you. So I just wanted to start by thanking everyone who, who has worked on the park's strategic plan. It seems like we've just been really talking about this for years, and seeing all of this in, in front of me, and all of this coming to fruition is, is amazing, and there's a lot of hard work that went in from so many different people, staff and the Parks Board, all the community engagement that, that we received, and I just, I really appreciate that. Ross, I want to thank you especially for your years of service, and, and I know you're going to be very much missed here, and best of luck. The, just seeing the 51 strategic projects is, is, it's just amazing, and, and being able to look at the, especially the, the Green Necklace work, I'm just very excited to be able to have this plan in place. A couple of the comments that I made about the tree canopy, that's definitely something that I'm very interested in. I know that we've heard public feedback about the tree canopy, and I think that that would be an element that we could wrap in either in the strategic plan, as, as you mentioned, Councilmember Hunt, or, or here in the urban forest. The, I too, it, it did seem a little awkward to have the, the, the Green Necklace after the conclusion, and I'm not, still not incredibly clear on why that, that couldn't just be part of the overall plan. It just gives it a little bit of an awkwardness and, and probably calls out more questions, but, but still thinking about that. As far as the timing goes, it sounds like we haven't had a lot of public comment on the, the SEPA checklist, the, but this going before PPC and, and then coming right back to council is giving me a little bit of pause. At, at the very least, I would say, and I'd like to hear, you know, everybody's feedback about this, but at the very least, I would say that anything that comes out of PPC should be really clearly delineated in the agenda bill, so everyone can understand that this information came out after the committee. And if it's substantial, I, you know, I've asked about impact, and it didn't sound like there was a great impact if we needed to wait, so I would, I could be supportive either way. And again, I just, I just, I'm very excited about this. I think it, a lot of hard work has gone into this. I think it's a beautiful document, it's just, it was really fun to read through, and I just know how much hard work has gone into it, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Just a couple of final comments. I'm a big believer in strategic plans being tools, not artifacts, and so it causes, it gives me a little bit of pause when it says we're going to update this every six years, because I think you ought to be updating it pretty regularly, because we live in a pretty dynamic environment and a pretty dynamic place, and we're not going to look anything like we do today six years from now. So my suggestion is going forward that we not say we're going to update this in six years, but that we actually say we're going to pull this out every six months, every year, and we're going to go through an update process, and we're going to look at our environment, and we're going to see what's changed, because a lot will change guaranteed in the next six years. I have an interesting, different view than my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Hunt, on opportunistic, or on low-hanging fruit, because the other word used for that is opportunistic, and the one thing that I want to use the strategy for is so that we don't go chasing after, wow, how can we pass that up? Because we've made some, I think, maybe not the best decisions in the past, because we were being opportunistic and we were going for it, because something immediately presented itself and we went after it. So in terms of the scoring rubric of how do we prioritize things, I think there's a, there's a two-dimensional model here, and one of those dimensions is, you know, what's the cost or ease of doing it, and the other dimension is what's the benefit to the community? So, and you want the things that are obviously low-cost, low, low hassle factor and high value, and you don't want the ones that are low-value and high hassle factor. So those are just a couple of comments kind of in closing. I've said this before, I love the plan, it's, it's great. I guess my aha moment today is kind of really recognizing that this is really our portfolio of parks, and this is our, how we're going to manage that portfolio, and it's like any other asset that the city has, we should have a pretty rigorous portfolio management process in place, so that we are, we are being thoughtful, and use your word, Jeff, intentional, on how we manage those assets in the long term. So I think it's really great. So, any other comments? It's, the question is, all in favor of recommending to the full? You want to make a comment? Do you want, I want to make a comment if you don't.
Well, I, I feel like we should maybe have a discussion around a, a couple of the points and, and how we're, how we're feeling. As, as I said, just in terms of the timing issue, if things are clearly spelled out in terms of what the PPC has come back with, and that's in the agenda bill, if it's, well, it's hard to classify this, but if, if it's a large amount, and it seems like this could use a little more time, I'm going to let you keep former PPC.
use a little more time, I'm going to let you keep former PPC, Councilmember Hunt, talk to, speak to this.
My, my concern is that we, they will be given the materials and they will know, just as we have an Agenda Bill, it says this is the, this is the, the plan, it's going to come before us and then it's going to go to the full council at this, at this coming meeting. And so they'll, they'll also know that. And I think that I would, I would like to give them the opportunity to make changes or to make suggestions for changes that the staff could incorporate and I would like to present the materials in a way that facilitates that kind of a discussion that could lead to changes. So to the extent that having it turn around so fast as the, the stated plan, I think that that would probably not facilitate the same level of willingness to make changes. And I, I mean, as I said, I think that they, they worked on the Central Issaquah Visions just recently, it did have a sort of strong component of how the, the Central Issaquah community visions was going to integrate with the Parks Plan, especially with the Green Necklace. And so I think there is a good conversation to be had there and I, my preference would be to allow them a little, to allow the staff to have a little more time to incorporate whatever comments they might have.
Would you be more comfortable if this was referred to July 2nd?
Yeah, I was just thinking maybe we should recommend bringing it back instead of on the 18th of June to go to July 2nd, that gives plenty of time if PC, or actually to honor PPC's time, it, it seems a little bit like, you know, kind of jamming them up that they don't really, feels like going through a process for process sake if they don't have time to actually provide meaningful input. So I would like to suggest we send it to July 2nd regular, or regular business.
I was taking a quick look at the planning calendar.
I knew you were.
Since that will be my job tomorrow morning. And I think that, I mean, I can't speak for the group, but just based on what I see, I think that that would be workable. So we're saying that does not need to come back to services and safety, but go, just give it a little time before it goes back to council and then we also can clearly spell out what, what came after this meeting and what the changes were so everyone can clearly understand that in the Agenda Bill.
I think that makes sense. I could be supportive of that.
I'm supportive of that.
Okay.
Okay. Well, great, because I think one of the issues that we heard pretty loud and clear is we were feeling very uncomfortable about the timeline of coming out of PPC and that it was not going to give them time to make any changes. So if we move to July 2nd, regular business, I think that makes a lot of sense and, and like I said, it's much more respectful of their time than making them feel like we're just pushing it through them. All right. So with that, all in favor of, oh, yes?
I also wanted to, I wondered if we had any discussions about a recommendation regarding the conclusions and the separation of the conclusions and the, the Green Necklace. I mean, I, I think, I think that personally to me, it really makes the Green Necklace seem like it's not part of the Parks Plan because you conclude and it says, it was a, I, I thought that the conclusion was very nice, but it was really a conclusion, like these are the final, these are the final remarks and this is the, the way we're going to go forward and then you see the Green Necklace. So I, I, I see that it is a different style, but I would much prefer to have it integrated into the document because it seems like a critical part of the Parks Plan to me.
Can I ask a quick question to Jeff?
Absolutely.
Could, could you address that one more time? Just, just explain.
Yeah, so, so there were a lot of moving parts going on in, in the creation of this document and then, as you remember, in, in January, the opportunity to get this collaborative look at the Green Necklace happened. What we tried to do, and even as that work was happening, we had a lot of conversations inter-departmentally, where does the Green Necklace live? Does it live in Central Issaquah Visions? Does it live here in the Park Plan? And as all of those actions were taking place, how it sits right now, and it certainly, it's flexible, it's absolutely flexible, but what we tried to do in representing this document and you, if you see the table of contents in Chapter 4, the where we are going, there's a, there's a reference in a, in a page, page 54, for the Green Necklace. And so we, we weave the Green Necklace into the Park Plan and reference, hey, Chapter 7, you're going to see the full implementation plan, all of the work of that. Yes, that is, there's an awkwardness to it being after the conclusion. It wouldn't be all that difficult if there was a desire to have the Green Necklace be Chapter 6 and the conclusion be Chapter 7, we could do that. Just understanding, it's going to, it, it does read at a different granular, granular level. We, the Necklace work is looking at public rights of way and public parks and trails within Central Issaquah as opposed to just our public off-ride-away infrastructure.
I have a little bit different point of view. I don't think it belongs in the document at all. I mean, I was, I'm okay with it in the document, but it is, it's a level of detail that we don't have for any of the other areas, so that's why I'm a little bit not unhappy where it's at, but I don't think it, so where's our, where's our big write-up on the Creek Corridor and, you know, where's our big write-up on, on some of the other components? So what we have is, we have a kind of a question about boulders and pebbles here and, you know, we got one thing that with a lot of detail because we had a lot of detail because we've done a lot of work with it, but I think we could do, we could accomplish the same goal in the plan and make the plan just as useful if we, if we reference the, the work that's been done around the gold, the Golden Necklace, the Green Necklace as well as opposed to inserting in the plan and giving it what I think is a lot of, of real estate that probably diminishes some of the other initiatives that are, that are, that are listed here. So that's, that's, it's a sort of a different take on a theme. I, I get you, it's kind of jarring when you kind of come out of the conclusions and you go into, you know, all this detail on the, on the Green Necklace, but for me, it just, it seems like I'd put it in an appendix or I'd reference it externally.
Councilmember Batiste?
So I, I'm trying to pull this up, but is there, in the conclusion, is there sort of an explanation of why the, the Green Necklace is down below?
No, no. If you look at page 54, not that you have to look it up, so this is within the where are we going, this is the, this is the page within the plan that really sets up the Green Necklace. This is happening at the same time that we're introducing the strategic projects, we're introducing the Creek Corridor and our other anchor corridors, so we're trying to give it the same elevation and importance as we start laying out the, you know, yeah, where are we going, the strategic projects, in that we, we close that portion of the Green Necklace saying, refer to Chapter 7 for the full Green Necklace plan and character elements. So that was our effort as Central Issaquah, or, yeah, Central Issaquah Visions, decisions were being made, all right, how do we, how do we give this a place to live, but also understand it's, it is different, it's a different level and it's a different, has a different scope of infrastructure.
So for me, after hearing that explanation, I, I think, and I would be reticent to, to change it after all the work that's gone into the thought process behind how that is structured and how the document is set up. I wonder if a sort of happy medium might be to give more clarity in the, in the conclusion, some clarification, the reason why Green Necklace is where it is. We might, the three of us might be falling in different areas on this.
I'm thinking, so can I ask you a question of my esteemed colleagues?
Yeah.
Does it add a lot of value to the plan, having that level of detail in the Green Necklace? I think that's, for me, is the fundamental question. Are, is the plan more usable because I have on the Green Necklace all this detail?
I think it does because the, so the Central Issaquah Plan Visions currently has developer obligations and it has all this information about how developers are going to work with the city to have us achieve this pedestrian-oriented, vibrant Central Issaquah plan that we, that we are aspiring to. And then that has basically the same level of detail as page 54, it has very similar, it has, I think, two paragraphs and it has that map, but that's what it has for the Green Necklace. And then it refers you to the Parks Plan. So right now, we have, for, for the Central Issaquah Plan Visions, we have them referring to the Parks Plan to get more detail. So this, this detail. And so this detail is very granular, but I think it, it does, I think it would be important in terms of how we achieve the layout, the sort of integration with the different buildings and I think, I think it, I don't know that it, so right now, that's how it's set up is that it refers, that the visions refer to the Parks, draft Parks Plan for that level of detail on the Green Necklace and how it would integrate. And so it is, I mean, it talks about sort of street, minimum separation between shared use vehicular area and building face, it goes into way more detail, but I think it does need a place because that guidance is necessary, I think, to achieve the vision. I still am struggling with it being a chapter that's different than everything else and that comes after the conclusions and, and the.
It feels a bit, a bit jammed in there and I don't, it doesn't feel, it feels like it belongs more in the Central Issaquah Visions or belongs someplace else, but it's not part of your strategy. This isn't strategic at all. This is, this is, this is direction, this is policy, this is not about your, you know, where you're, you're going.
Right, and I, I mean, I, I do agree with that. I think that this, it kind of, to me, it kind of was this in-between because it goes into a lot of detail, much more than, for example, the Creek Corridor, which in the, in the Parks Plan, the sort of, there's, the Creek Corridor has two pages, then there's the Green Necklace and I think it has one or two pages and then, then you, it directs you down to, to Chapter 7, it has all, all this detail for this one component. At the same time, it didn't, when we looked at it next to the visions, it really stood out as different than the visions as well and so it didn't integrate into the, the visions, Central Issaquah Visions as well, at least in my opinion. So I'm not, I wonder about it being an appendix perhaps, that was a suggestion, that might be.
So ironic, this is very ironic, that was, in the earlier draft, it was an appendix, but it was, there was some comment by, made by others that, boy, if Central Issaquah Visions is now referencing it in the Park Plan, having it just be an appendix of the Park Plan is like, well, doesn't maybe demonstrate the degree of importance that we as a city and a community feel and so.
The other thing with appendices is that they're often lost.
Yeah.
And just from a 10,000-foot level, you know, we've been talking about the Green Necklace vision and being so excited about seeing this come forward and so to me, this, this is the place that it should be and I would hate to see it in it. I agree with the statement you just made, sometimes that, that's just lost or, or it maybe diminishes the importance of it and I think the importance is so great. So I, I feel very comfortable with it in here. After hearing background on having it come after the conclusion, I'm, I'm actually okay with keeping it here in the plan.
Did, so it's moved around a little bit and have, was there any other options that you and the staff or Parks Board thought of in terms of maybe not calling it a chapter, but calling it the, I don't know, Green Necklace?
I was chuckling earlier because I, I so appreciate this conversation because this is the same conversation and debate that we've, I've wrestled with in my own mind, we've talked about as staff. One, I guess another option we talked about that didn't, that had a degree of awkwardness to it as well was, does all, you know, 18 pages of this just belong right after page 54? You know, do we, do we weave it in so that where we are going fades? So we, we tee up the strategic projects, you know, that's how that chapter starts, we tee up the themes, then we tee up the strategic projects and then we talk about these system-wide corridors that are comprised within those projects. We then talk about on page 54, the Green Necklace. It was a rather quick conversation we had because it, it didn't feel elegant to just say, well, let's, let's just lump all 16 pages right into, right into that, but it sort of feels like a, it feels a little disruptive at that point too because we're trying to give this more strategic picture of the plan. So yes, we did think about them, but it didn't feel like a good option either.
Where do you document the Creek Corridor? I mean, more than the four paragraphs we have here.
So it's documented, it's referenced, as you then go into the strategic projects themselves, into these projects, you'll see some of the numbered projects that make up that corridor that it gets, it's kind of, it's kind, it's woven in that way. So it doesn't show itself as a Creek Corridor again, it shows itself as these little bites that as we take those bites will become the Creek Corridor. I should, can I add one more thought because maybe, maybe this helps us as we're brainstorming here out loud on TV? Is, so the, the 17 elements that make up the Green Necklace, those numbers, those elements are also part of the strategic projects. So the, the, there's, there's some, some interplay there as, as well. These 17 elements aren't 17 new elements, they're, they're also woven into the plan that way, for what it's worth.
Councilmember Hunt?
And I believe also the vision also has the 17 elements and refers you to the Parks Plan for detail on the 17 elements that are in the map. So they're, they're kind of tied together. The, I was just going to make one other comment, which is that it, it's a little circular because the Creek Corridor is also part of the, the Green Necklace and it's called out in the Green Necklace section and there's a whole page on the Creek Corridor, much more detail, or two, you know, almost two pages on the Creek Corridor in the Green Necklace section. So they're all.
Which is a great interplay, right? I mean.
Well, it's supposed to be integrated, right? So one, one question that I have is what's the purpose of the Green Necklace vision? What, why do we have it?
Wow, why do we have it?
It's our primary objective for documenting it. We spent a lot of time on it, did a lot of work, why did we do it?
I'm going to give my answer. Like we, we did it because there was a longstanding term and, and idea and concept of this Green Necklace that supports Central Issaquah, that surrounds Central Issaquah. It became pretty clear as we were going down the Park Plan route that so much of that Necklace is reliant and is woven into the public park system, just like we're talking about here. And so why we did this specific work was really seizing this opportunity as the Central Issaquah Visions was, I'm not going to pick the right word, was struggling with how to bring definition to the Necklace. Here was a chance to use the consultant team from the Park Plan and let's, let's really do an, a collaborative approach at taking this deep dive. And so it, it brings clarity, why we did it, it brings clarity to a, boy, 10-year-old plus concept for the city and really puts some actionable elements to it.
Councilmember Batiste?
Oh, I'm just going to throw this out there. I was wondering if, if maybe there would be a world where we could in the conclusion give more information about the fact that. would be a world where we could, in the conclusion, give more information about the fact that, give out the conclusion information and then talk about that we're giving additional detail on the Green Necklace. And then on the cover page, you know, that, that, the cover page for Green Necklace could change to additional details on the Green Necklace because that, I, I don't mean that literally. Somebody needs to come up with some great words for that. But we mention it above, we talk about it as, as part of the overall plan. And I think it should definitely be there. But if you go into all the detail that, that is there before we get to how are we going to get there, then it does seem cumbersome. So the more I look at this and go back and forth about this question, I think it is in the right place. But I, I think that we need to add some clarity.
Can I make a suggestion off of that? In this live brainstorming that we're doing? This is so fun.
A work session, or a working committee, right?
I like it. I like that. Actually, this is good. I appreciate this. So in Chapter Seven, as we were drafting this, the Green Necklace, we, we crafted an introduction, not necessarily knowing where that introduction was going to live. Is this going to live in Central Issaquah Visions? Is it going to live in here? As I go back and I'm just quickly looking at this introduction, I'm sort of looking at staff, too, and what they think of this. I think there's some language in this introduction of Chapter Seven that we could almost bring into the conclusion. I, I think there might be a way to bridge, so that the conclusion doesn't feel like a conclusion. It's sort of a, hey, we're closing the strategic plan part. Hey, part of this was this Green Necklace. Let's also tee up or introduce you into and bring you into this work that happened that really is a key part and is already woven into the Park Plan, but it's, somehow, I think we can strengthen that relationship with some of the language we already have. Maybe it's just placing it a little different.
I like that idea.
I, I think that may be a challenge, but I think if you can, if you can try that and have it kind of read as a conclusion that, that doesn't feel like, because right now, right now, it really sort of ends.
I get it, yeah.
Yeah.
It could be smoother, it could be a smoother, probably smoother transition.
Yeah. I think, I think that sounds good. I also wonder if, so the Planning Policy Commission did work on how to integrate the, the Green Necklace into the visions. And so they might also have some thoughts on how to, how to address this potentially, since they're also going to be looking at it. But I, I think it's good, especially if.
You can give that a go. I think there's language, I think there's some language here that, that we're not having to redraft a bunch of stuff.
Okay. I'm okay. Let's do that.
Okay.
Ms. Roberta Ties?
And, and I would just, I do feel strongly about the tree canopy. So I, I think if that, if that could be incorporated somewhere, that just have that added, that we would be taking a look at that. That's important to me.
Tree canopy in terms of percentage?
Some overall planning or, or the tree canopy. And I can think more about that, but I, I think just as we're talking about, the, the place that it seemed to make sense had to do with the urban forest. And so if there could be a mention there.
That's where we saw it as well. So.
So there's a couple of, I think there's some guidance and direction that we've kind of put out here that I think is worth reiterating. So the first really isn't, is around scheduling. And so we're going to go with a July 2 regular council business for bringing this back to give PPC time to do their job. We are going to leave Section Seven on the gold, our Green Necklace after the conclusion section, but we are going to insert some transition in there so it doesn't look like it's tacked on to the back end and that it actually flows in the document. And we are going to include additional language where appropriate around maintaining the tree canopy, particularly as it relates to urban forest. Did I capture kind of our big, our big topics?
Right. And I, and I think with the tree canopy, it is.
I have one more.
Developing a plan around the tree canopy and maintaining. Or I guess I would just say developing a, a plan for the tree. A lot that goes into that, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just think we have to be careful that this is a strategic plan, it's not an operational plan. So I think there's a lot of things that are going to come out of it. You know, I think we can spawn some, some initiatives out of this that can deal with how do we want to manage trees, the tree canopy in the city. But I, I am fearful that, I don't want us to get down in the weeds on a strategic plan and start talking about specific, you're going to do this, this, and this, because I think we'll lose the value in the strategy if we do that. So that's my only concern about that. And then the, the final note I have here is that we also need to make sure that with initiatives that have multifaceted timelines, that we're, we have some clarity about what's happening in the short term, what's happening mid, what's happening long.
What's the sequence?
Anything else that we, we talked about that I missed?
I, I also struggle with the low-hanging fruit being equal in terms of scoring to things like improved performance or system diversity, things that seem like they are much more, things that you would prioritize. But I, I also realize that a lot of, that there's a lot of moving pieces to this. And I think, to your point, this is a strategy. And so as long, you know, to not get bogged down in the specific scores on different things, but at the same time, to weight it equally with things like improving performance, to me, doesn't make sense.
Ms. Roberta Ties?
I wanted to ask if, when you were talking about review, if we wanted to talk about having an annual review, if we want to be more specific or do, because I, I too agree with that. I think that we have this coming back every six years, but we don't, I'm sorry, how often?
We do, in terms of, to qualify for state grants, we need to update our park, open space, trail strategic plan in that sequence. So that's a, more of a formal full update. It sounds like if there's sort of a review or assessment or, hey, how are we doing?
Review is what I would think.
Can do that more frequently.
Can you please remind me, what is the timeline on the near term? What is the definition of the near term?
So we roughly tried to take sort of six-year blocks. So again, you know, think of this as a 20-year, you know, plus 18, 20-year view. And knowing we're going to be reviewing more frequently, updating it every five or six years.
I think it would be good to include in the plan, language about annual reviews at a minimum. We bring it back, we look at progress we've made, we look at changes in the environment, we take a pulse of the population, and then we say, does this still hang together? Is our scoring methodology giving us the results that we think are appropriate? And we make updates to it. And I think it, it also removes some of the pressure that we've got everything right this time. We recognize that there's some things that are going to change, and we're going to come back and we're going to change them. And we give ourselves permission to make those changes.
I would also say, I, I think it's just so important as you have new council members come on to council, and then you're getting a touch on an overview of something so important, like the Park Strategic Plan. So I like that.
That certainly could fit into our work plan. We certainly know we'll have, we'll have, we'll be checking in on this document. So having a, an annual checkup or a discussion, would you see that as sort of a work session item?
Yes.
I mean, just sort of thinking at that level and scale. Yep, okay.
View.
All right. After all that. So we are, we have agreed to move this to July 2 council business. All those in favor of recommending to the full council to adopt resolution to approve the 2018 Park Strategic Plan, say aye.
Aye.
And I'm just going to do a really quick recap, so we get this in the minutes. And so the big, significant issues we talked about, one is the timeline and why we moved to July 2 to provide PPC with adequate time to do their work and provide feedback and make changes as needed. We talked about the structure of the document and where the Green Necklace fit into the overall plan. And we agreed to leave it as Chapter Seven, not as an appendix, but to add additional language at the conclusion of, at the end of the conclusion, not the conclusion, the conclusion, at the end of the conclusion, to make a transition into the Green Necklace and why it is at that part in the document. We talked about wanting a more focus on the tree canopy and how that fits into initiatives around urban, urban forest. And we also talked about the need to have clarity around initiatives that have multifacets to their timelines, so that it's clear what's going to happen when. And then finally, we talked about the need to make annual updates to the Parks Plan and to bring those back to a council work session annually. Was there anything else that really stood out tonight that we, because we had some really great discussions. That was, that was pretty awesome. Okay. Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Parks Board, and for, and, and Parks Staff. And Ross, thank you for everything that you've done for the city. All right. So you guys doing okay? Should we march on? Okay. Oh, gosh, you're back. Jeff.
Yeah.
Senior Center update.
I, if you don't mind, I'm going to come sit and join you for this. This is just more of a conversation update.
Wasn't the last one?
Yes, the last one was. And thank you, before we get too far off that. Thank you for your guidance and, and support with the Park Strategic Plan. It's a great, great product. So let me find my notes. The Senior Center, we've been, if you recall, earlier this year, we came and provided an update to the, to the full council on steps moving forward. And one of the, the recommendations that came from administration was a desire, what would it look like to, to seek an operating partner? How do we go about trying to find an operating partner to consider working with in the, in the Senior Center operation as we look at our governance options for long-term operation in the Senior Center, whether third-party or city operation? If you recall, we sought some resources in that same action to retain a consultant and a partner, if you will, to, to help us in that effort. Tonight, I want to give you an update on the work that we've been doing these past couple of months and sort of talk about what we see framing up as, as some policy discussion moving forward. So we went out and did a search, Brian Mertson and I, of consultants, had a chance to interview a few. We hired Wendy Wantanabi. She's been terrific, a lot of experience in the senior services world, as well as human services world. She's been working with both Brian and I, also David Fujimoto and staff from OS, the OS Department have been part of this staff work and consultant work that we've done. Some of the work that we did really early on initiating was a first review of the advisory group report and the work that came out of, the strong work that came out of the advisory group. What was really confirming and affirming in that was, I think Wendy was extremely complimentary of the work of the advisory group and some of the guiding principles that came out of that work that really helped to, I think, steer our, our decision-making and our future decision-making on what we want long-term operation, what we want that facility, not just operation, but what we want that facility to look like in the long term. From that work, we then embarked on a series of conversations, did some outreach and had conversations with some local nonprofit agencies, some regional nonprofit agencies, what we called conversations, just about potential partnering with us, operation of the Issaquah Senior Center, what's happening at the Senior Center now. We found those conversations to be very instructive. Some of them were a series of conversations with these potential partners. But we thought that was really important work before just sending out a blind, whether it's an RFP or a letter of interest, let's gauge interest, let's gauge where these agencies are at. At the same time we were doing that work, we also put together a survey for our Senior Center patrons and our customers, sort of a, hey, how are we doing? What's going well? What are their interests moving forward? Courtney Garcia's here as well tonight. I want to introduce Courtney. Courtney's our, our manager of the, the Senior Center, really doing an absolutely terrific job. It's, it's great to see, even in that survey. And I think the survey responses spoke this loud and clear. There's a continually growing, strong level of trust and appreciation and really applause for what that Senior Center's becoming, what it's become, and, and the degree of comfort and, and trust that our customers have is, is great. And, and has certainly been strengthened by Courtney and the, and the team that are, that's there. So this interim transition, one of our primary goals, if you remember, in this is, as we keep the doors open, we want to start leaning into a new future. And it certainly feels like we've been, been doing that. Back to the conversations we were having with our partners while the survey was happening. I guess I would, I would say that nobody's in a position to jump up and down and do cartwheels saying, please, 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 please let us be the operator of the Senior Center. There are probably more questions that potential partners have than necessarily feeling equipped or ready to, to just jump right in. That feedback really led us to, what we have now out is a letter of interest that we've sent out into the senior services realm and not only to these agencies that we've spoken to, but certainly any and all other interested agencies. That's out on the street right now. We really intended that to be a rather simple but thorough chance to vet where these agencies are at, not only what their level of interest is, but what their level of capacity is for being a potential operating partner. That closes the end of this month, on June 28. While we're doing that work, we're also, as 2019 budget preparation is, is underway, we're also looking at what a city operating model would look like long-term, so we could have, again, an important and healthy degree of, of comparison, building a budget of what long-term operation would look like. The intent is, as this LOI process closes in June, I think it'll really allow, it, it will likely affirm the conversations we had, but in a little more formal way, let us know where these agencies are at. Give us the chance then to evaluate and assess, all right, what does this mean? What does this look like? And I think allow us to be strategic in those policy decisions about how do we continue to move forward with the Senior Center, both operationally and just as the facility that we want it to be. One other item I want to, to update or mention as we look at long-term city operation or potential long-term city operation, we're, we're looking at a funding, what would the funding strategy need to look like in that scenario? And that includes grants. What, what grant opportunities are there for both public agencies and, and nonprofit agencies? We do have, as King County passed, the veterans and, and seniors. We do have, as King County passed the Veterans and Seniors Levy a couple of years ago, they've refined and now have a grant process available. In fact, on the June 18th council agenda, you'll see a request for us to submit an application for that. Courtney and Brian have been hard at work putting together an application for that. That levy process, what the county's announced is a two-phase approach to those levy proceeds, they've, they're soliciting applications now for 2018 funding. That then sets the stage for a further, later this year, they'll have another process for 2019 to 2023 funding. We thought it very important and very strategic for us to submit a 2018 application while we're going through these conversations on what 2019 and beyond operation looks like. So, it's a little bit of a highlight of where we're at, I think it really sets the stage, and as we laid out the timeline early this year, we wanted to have this check-in in June, this checkpoint. I think with the LOI process closing at the end of this month, we're really planning and preparing for some of that policy discussion happening in July and August, ahead of the budget process, and then depending on what policy direction we get in those discussions, that will help inform budget processes as we get into that in the fall. So, I wanted to give you that update.
Any questions? Mr. Batiste, you're not supposed to go first.
Sorry. Thank you for the update. Jeff, so it sounds like really, we're, we're really heading down two pathways and making sure all the bases are covered going down both of those pathways, so we can come together and make a decision a little bit later. And what was the, I'm sorry, the timing again?
So, we're not, we're not on a planning calendar yet, but July and August was that, that two-month period where we would like to, again, we'll have LOI responses, we'll have a sense of what long-term operation looks like, I think we'll get a, a sense of this immediate grant opportunity with King County looks like, and that'll help to.
And then when, when would you find out about the 2018 grant?
I think there'll be an initial, well, given it's 2018 funding, I know it's, it's a rather quick turnaround, as I'm looking at Courtney, I would say within the next, probably sometime end of June or July. They're going to be evaluating these quite quickly to give agencies the opportunity to.
Great that that opportunity now exists.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's remember Hunt.
I'm interested in the surveys that you said that were connected, so I wondered, well, first, how many people actually use the, how many patrons there are, how many people use the center, and also, how many or what percentage approximately took the survey, and then what were the, the main findings of the survey? I know you said generally there was appreciation for the direction that we're headed, but sort of, any specifics that jumped out?
Yeah, I can certainly get you copies of a little more detailed summary that I'm giving you right now. We have, in terms of number of patrons, we have all of our patrons registered through our class system and have a card, I think we're just up to, we're about at 1,000, I'm looking at Courtney, plus or minus about 1,000 patrons, strong. Survey responses, we had 100 and.
Roughly about 130, which represented 30% of our regular users.
That's a great way to put it, 130, 130 responses, about 30% of our 600, 700 regulars. Yep.
And do you have any, other than sort of general appreciation for the direction, any other?
Strong appreciation, I think programmatically, very much a desire to increase our number of trips that we offer, continue to add more diversity of programs, some of the same, just interest for what more opportunities look like programmatically. So, as we have this conversation, helping us to get, we have to remind ourselves and our patrons sometimes, that as we're in this interim operation mode, that, that's really limiting our programmatic capacity, really get any, offer any, any further trips or, or other, other programs till we get this long-term operation question answered.
And I also had a question about the letter of interest versus RFP and that decision, and I think, I think that you were, I think it had to do with that there were sort of questions and this would be a way to start more of a conversation, is that right? Or I, I'm wondering why the letter of, of interest route.
Question, great question. I honestly, I think based on the conversations and given the lack of firm response from agencies, that, there isn't a sense that there's agencies positioned and ready to submit a proposal. We felt an LOI was a little better way to further that conversation and further a potential relationship without asking for a firm, firm proposal like an RFP would.
So, Jeff, can you come back in July or August and brief us again, because I think you'll have a lot more relevant information to share at that time.
Absolutely.
And then if you could also send us the survey results, that would be, I think, very interesting too, that we can noodle through them.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Yep.
We've kept you long enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is the Economic Development and Economic Vitality Commission Biannual Update, presented by Jen Davis et al.
And, yes, and Crowd.
Et al.
Good evening. So, my name is Jen Davis Hayes, I work here in the city in economic development, and we are here as part of our biannual update to the council, to the Services and Safety Committee. Looks like everybody's left is our folks, so I have to, my left here, Tim Dutter, who's also an Economic Development Manager, and he'll be coming up later, James Henderson, who is the Economic Development Manager of Bellevue, but we are, work in partnership with them with the Startup 425. We have the Chair of our Economic Vitality Commission, Jeff Howlett, we have our Economic Development Director, we have another, a newly-appointed Economic Vitality Commissioner, Ashwin, and then Christopher Wright, who works in the Development Services and also works very closely with us in economic development. So, lots of people who may not be paid or a title of economic development that have interest in what we do. So, we're going to go through some of the, some of the things about what we do in economic development in broader terms, and then more specific, and then we'll have a special presentation about Startup 425. So, thinking about, you know, what makes a vital community? Are there things that, I'm going to be interactive here a bit, if you so allow me to, what things do you think about when you think about a vital community? Can I put you on the spot? Oh, hello. That's okay, it's a long meeting. If it's a long meeting, I can go through some things, but.
Councilmember Hunt, go ahead, jump in.
So, I think vital community, I mean, vital, you think livability, so you think everything that you need is accessible to you, and I also think about accessible for people in sort of different stages of life, and maybe wanting, maybe if you have a family or, or you're, so different, like housing and different, meeting all the different needs of the community, that's what I would think of with a vital, vital community. And also, I think especially, a challenge right now is sort of switching more to pedestrian or modes of transportation that are, you're able to get around with different, so everything is accessible, but with different modes of transportation, like without necessarily needing your own vehicle. So, that's what I think of with vital community.
And are there additions? That's, yeah, good.
I'm going to, I have a little bit different tack, because I think a vibrant community is different for everybody, or a vital community. I think some people see it as councilmember Hunt and Batiste do, but I think others see it in, in other, through other lenses too, but it's something that's alive, I think that's where vital comes from, it's something that's growing, not dying, so it's, it's got a growth component, and I think it's got a positive energy to it, so there's a, there's a vibe, and I think you can achieve that with some of the things we talked about, walkability, livability, things like that, but I think there are other ways to achieve it too.
Yeah. So, those things you described are what businesses look for as well. So, us as residents may say that's what we look for, but businesses look for that type of environment too. So, they're looking to, you know, that it's vibrant, that there's a strong economy, that there's environmental stewardship, there's arts and culture, good schools for their employees, all those things. And so, as we think about it, you know, the things that we work on not only touch businesses, but help the broader community. And so, when you think about what a strong economy is, you know, so the Economic Development Department and our commissioners, Economic Vitality Commissioners, work to create a strong economy. Here's just a few examples of what that can look like. The chart on the side is from our business survey in 2016, so we did one in 2012, did one in 2016, and so, the top one is showing the percentage of, 84% show that businesses have a positive experience being here in Isaguas, that went up from 72%, 73%. And so, we're, the things that we are doing to address, when the department started in 2012, we believe are starting to address people feeling that they are doing well in Isaguas, and we as a city are concerned about their success here, so we're excited about that. Any questions? This isn't, again, there's probably 1,000 more things you could put here as a strong economy, yeah.
Member Hunt.
I'm, I think it's great that there's a increase in the positive responses for Isaguas a place to do business. Do you have a sense of what specifically is sort of tipping those responses between 2012 and 2016?
So, part of it could be the economy, part of it could be that we didn't exist before 2012, and not that to say that we came along and everything became so much better, but just the, our, the mere fact of out, reaching out to businesses, talking about what those issues are. So, in the survey, we ask similar questions each year, and the concerns people had were affordable housing for their employees, workforce development, transportation traffic, not that, again, we solved any of those problems, but that we, for some of those businesses, we helped to find, help look at some solutions and kind of, you know, say, great, we're glad that you have informed us, we'll make sure that your information is part of this broader strategy we're, we're doing as a city, for instance, with the housing strategy.
Okay, so, do I understand correctly then that part of, part of it is that this was the first, 2012 was the first time you went out and?
2012 was when the department, the Economic Development Department was created, so before that, it was a one-person and manager position, and so, the city really, when they did the reorganization, they really focused on creating a four-person department, it was three at that time, to focus on doing more economic development activities, so.
Okay, so then, so, so in your, you're saying then that the economic development, the economic development department is part of the increase in the.
Part of it, yeah.
Isaguas a place to do business, okay, thanks.
Jen?
Yes, yes, yes.
I was just going to say, I, I know that retention is going to come up.
Next slide.
A little bit later, but is that thought about in terms of a strong economy for the city and the surrounding areas?
So, I'm sorry.
Is this retention?
Yeah, so that's actually a core part, and so, actually, if I jump ahead, just the next slide, so, and Mariah knows a lot about this, because she was in the Economic Vitality Commission when we created, we have an economic development strategic plan that's actually 2014 to, 15 through 18, and we are going to update it later this year, we want the city's strategic plan to get a little farther along before we spend time kind of steering the ship. But the four goals and strategies that were developed at that time, the first one really is about the current businesses, so 80% of our economic growth comes from existing businesses. So, while it's, it's always fun to say, wow, this new business came into town, a lot of businesses are quietly growing, and they're, you know, outgrowing their, outgrowing their space, and our role should be, hey, great, we're, we're glad that you're outgrowing your space, let's find you another space, let's keep you here. If they have that connection to Isaguas, they will consider that versus just looking around at where are the cheapest, or where that, you know, where's more, where you can maybe move to. So, we worked, again, trying to build those relationships with, with the businesses, and so we do over 60 business visits a year, and actually later, we actually show that we've actually done more, you know, we're on target to, to beat that goal this year, and make sure that we have those conversations, we're one-on-one, you get to hear a little bit more about what, what the issues are and how we can help. And 99% of the time, and Tim will talk about this, they're just glad someone from the city cares. And so, I hear that, I work the most, most with recruitment and talking to, to property owners and brokers, and they're like, wow, the city's never reached out to me, any city I work in. So, again, it's, it's that building those relationships so that they know that, where to come to if they have some serious issues and where their advocate. So, this first one with a successful business environment, obviously, new businesses can benefit from that, but it really is about keeping what you have here and keeping them successful. And so, we work a lot in that category as well, with our chamber, with the Downtown Isaguas Association, with doing small business classes, and eventually more activities. The second one, which is promote value proposition, really is about marketing, recruitment, and thinking about who fits into our community. So, in 2015, we were designated as an innovation partnership zone for sports medicine, and so that's really where we, we focus our attention around the sports medicine from healthcare, the outdoor rec sectors, to bring businesses that fit into what we, we are strong here. Workforce development, housing, we actually just held our annual job fair in May, we also work with the Chamber workforce, work, I'm sorry, Education Committee on a couple of their programs that they work on, and we're working with the Chamber to start up a new young professionals program as well. So, trying to think about workforce at multiple ages. And then vibrant community, that gets back to, you know, everything that everybody wants to be here for, so making sure we have tourism, outdoor rec, diverse businesses to meet the needs of the residents. And so, within these four goals, we have probably about 1,200,000 action steps, but, but we actually have things that are, where we are the lead-in, and some of them where we support or are helping out, so like on transportation issues or, you know, workforce development issues around getting businesses connected to colleges, et cetera, for employment. So, we play multiple roles within this area here. And again, we'll be coming back to you later about how we, how we kind of, don't believe we're going to throw out our strategic plan and start from scratch, but really kind of refine and see if there's a little difference as far as what the economy looks like now. Yes, sorry, sorry.
You prefer if I wait until the answer?
No, nope.
Okay. So, we had a public comment on this one, and I had a similar question about the, the first choice for business location strategy. I, so my question is kind of motivated by the fact that we can't be everything for everyone, we can't, I don't, I don't see how we would be the first choice for every business. Some businesses would be more, we might be the first choice for a lot of businesses, but probably not for every business. So, I just wondered if you could explain that one a little more, it stands out to me as, just.
Yeah, so at a high level, that's kind of the, the tagline we put there, to explain what promote value proposition was, because that's also clunk clunky words. And that was at the beginning, again, of kind of our efforts around marketing and branding and figuring out, I think the IPZ was just starting to kind of bubble up about what we were, the innovation partnership zone, sorry, designation was just starting to bubble up, and we weren't sure which direction we were going to go. But really, we have been focusing our efforts on the lower action steps around the sports medicine, outdoor recreation, and some tourism activities. So, it's not, I think, and James can talk to this as well, from his experiences, that recruitment is one of those things you could spend a ton of time and money and be completely not have any results. So, I, I know that a lot of times people see in the newspaper, oh, Boeing's trying to move, or, you know, somebody's trying to look another place, and yes, we will go out and try to, you know, reach out and say, hey, if you're interested, but the reality is going after the businesses that really make a good fit here, and this, you know, for the amenities and type of things, that's where you're going to get your biggest bang for your buck. Going out and just kind of saying, we are, you know, all things everybody, you're right, it doesn't work, you're throwing spaghetti in the wall and it's all going to fall down. And it's a very expensive thing to do, to, you know, if you really put a lot of money and effort into it. But for our purposes here in Isaguas, we really have focus on those, and on those type of businesses, and then making sure if there are businesses that, that are currently here that are missing something in, you know, as a vendor or something like that, we, we talk to them about how we can, if there's opportunities for recruitment. So, that's with the sports medicine focuses, what, what services are we missing, and what can we bring in, so we're not referring people out to other areas? It's been our approach. Does that make sense? I can send you also more details about this, the action steps, the kind of the steps below it, because it may make more sense seeing more of those details, because it really isn't trying to go to Seattle and recruit Amazon, sorry.
Can you, could you explain also just the, what is meant by promote value? Can you, could you explain also just the, what is meant by promote value proposition?
So what is, yeah, so in the beginning, it's kind of defining, so it was defining, we had to define and then promote. Why would people want to come to Issaquah, right? So, so we, at the time, didn't even have marketing materials, you know, kind of if somebody, if business wanted to come, it's like, hi, we're a great place. So we did some work on creating five marketing sheets, talking about facts about, you know, investment, other investors, other investments have been made, talking about our amenities, talking about our location, talking about the top employers here, so really give people a feel about what we're about. And then the next step is kind of saying, okay, because I think a lot of people think we're a sleepy town on the, you know, the edge of the region here, and they don't realize all, yes, they realize we have a great amenities as far as outdoor rec, but, you know, we have a lot of Fortune 500 companies here, and so we, and we have a lot of amenities that they may not be aware of. So it's about promoting what our value to, you know, businesses would be. Yeah, it's clunky words. So those may be changed in the future, but again, because it's part of where we were at the time, right? You know, yeah, yeah.
I was just gonna follow up on that in terms of the first choice for business location, the focus there. My understanding would be that that is for Issaquah, but as you look at that regionally, if you were to look at that regionally, that that could really change. You were talking about Seattle, but on the Economic Development Council and all of the economic development groups that are out there in a larger region, there could be lots of groups that come in that think that they want to be in Seattle or they want to be in the Seattle area, so it's almost like a unique and different choice that you might not have thought about.
Exactly. No, that's a great point, yeah.
That's a really a question, sorry.
Okay, nice clarification.
Okay, so real quickly, just kind of, these are some of the things that, as far as activities we've done in 2018 to date, and so I mentioned some of these before about our business retention visits, the job fair, some of the partnerships we have. You guys have been very aware of the Destination Marketing Organization, that's been in front of you. And one of the things that we also did at the, when we were working with the Economic Vitality Commission last year was to think, thinking about what their work plan was gonna be this year, was how can we help out other projects that are gonna have some impact on businesses? So the Gilman Boulevard design that's happening now, we wanted to make sure, they're doing workshops next week, yes, this week? So we wanted to make sure that we, you know, obviously, the project would go out and communicate with businesses, but we wanted to kind of give it an extra oomph. So we actually, thanks to Ashwin and a couple other connections, I believe even Connie Marsh went out and did some door knocking for us, and Tim did a ton, went to businesses, handed them a flyer, told them about what's happening. So they, you know, got an email, they made us saw the blast, that, you know, so there's multiple touches. Because businesses, it's hard to kind of get them to come to a meeting because they're, you know, in their, in their business trying to do their thing. So we really, as an EBC, wanted to make sure that the business voice wasn't lost in what the future of Gilman was gonna look like, because that's a very vibrant commercial corridor currently, and we didn't want to lose that. So I am going, so one of the really cool activities we've done in the last year and a half has been to partner with our East Side cities. And so talking regionally, we've actually, in the last year and a half, have partnered up with the cities of Bellevue, Renton, Redmond, and Kirkland, and ourselves, to do, to join this program, it's a program called Startup 425. And so James is here to talk from, about this program more and can answer any questions about it. So before I go, any other questions about, we'll be back, all right.
Thank you very much, Jen. Pleasure to be here tonight, thank you very much for having me and kind of learning more about Startup 425. As Jen said, I'm the Economic Development Director of City of Bellevue, but also a proud resident of the City of Issaquah as well. My wife and I really love it here. In fact, I grew up here a number of years ago when Issaquah had the grass airfield out by where Costco was, so I sort of dates myself a bit, but it's always been a wonderful place, both growing up as a kid and now returning back to the great state of Washington to live and work here as well. So kind of picking up the theme of vitality, one of the things I haven't told my ED colleagues here is that our office, the Office of Economic Development for City of Bellevue, has actually changed its name. We are now the Cultural and Economic Vitality Office, so picking up on that vitality theme. The reason for that is because as we have implemented our economic development plan that was adopted by our city council back in 2014, we've really come to appreciate that the talent, that really what drives the economy in Bellevue and really sort of the East Side as a whole is talent. And what is needed to nurture and retain and support that talent long-term, I think is really gonna be very key and very successful for the region and in particular Issaquah and Bellevue's economy in the long-term. So we've changed our name to really kind of reflect that new focus on how we can do more placemaking, how we can do much more intentional economic development to support the broader City of Bellevue and its residents as well. But a big part of talent is keeping it here, and that's a big part of why Startup 425 is a program that we've taken, that is really sort of a regional program to really help the people who live here on the East Side. So, there we go, excellent. So really, as Jen said, Startup 425 is this partnership between the five East Side cities, thus the 425 name, really to put in place what we call an entrepreneurship ecosystem, one that really kind of takes that talent, you know, folks who may have come into this area, you know, years ago, say, working for Microsoft, Expedia, maybe other companies as well, they did that, it was a wonderful experience, but they want to branch out, they want to do something on their own. So this is a way for them to understand what it takes to become an entrepreneur. What do I need to do to start my own business? And what do, and is it something I really want to do? I think a lot of times people have this great notion that, oh, starting a business, that'd be a wonderful thing to do, I can surf on my couch and, you know, take it easy, set my own time schedules. But in reality, it's a lot of work. And really, I think what the, what Startup 425 has done for a lot of people is in some ways, make them understand, maybe this is something I don't want to do, maybe I want to go back to that eight-to-five job at Expedia or something like that. But this is a way, at least, that for very little cost and relatively little amount of time, they can understand what's needed to start their own company. So tonight, so we're gonna talk about a couple things, talk about the background, which we did a little bit there, talk about why this is important, the different programs that Startup 425 is currently working on, the regional approach, why we think that is important and something to keep going, results to date, and then the future. So really, you know, how did this all get created? Well, as I mentioned before, the City of Bellevue did an economic development plan back in 2014, and one of the main recommendations coming out of it was building a startup ecosystem and supporting that. So when I came on board in 2015, I hired an economic development manager, and so we started implementing this. But first, before we started doing things, we wanted to understand, well, what's this current startup ecosystem like on the East Side? What's currently in place to support people who want to start their own businesses? Is there a niche for us to kind of get into and really kind of help people? And then how can it be carried out? And so through conversations with local entrepreneurs, venture funds, and other types of service providers in the startup community, we really saw a kind of unique opportunity to provide really kind of a low-cost, sort of easy entry point for people to really kind of test the idea if they want to start their own company. And that is really kind of how Startup 425 really got started, was essentially, let's provide, through a partnership with some of our East Side, East Side cities as well as some of the other existing service providers, what can we do to really make this work for people? And really kind of attest a couple of things, such as, how do you understand who your customers are? How do you start your business and financing plan? How do you do your marketing? Things like that to get people going down the road, hopefully on a good foot. So the current programs, currently we have three programs within Startup 425, Foundations, Global Passport, and the Small Business Development Center Advisory Program. And then what we're doing is we're quote "testing," so we're looking at two new programs that we're actually launching this summer to kind of see how they go and see if there's some good viability in those. So back in 2017, the signature program of Startup 425 Foundations was launched. That was a partnership with SCORE and the King County Library System, with some very generous support from the Port of Seattle, who provided support through their Economic Opportunity Grants, to really put in place workshops across the whole five-city region. Twenty workshops were held in the five communities, and that yielded about 150 unique entrepreneurs who actually registered and signed up for the program. That was a fall series, and about 60% of the workshop respondents said it was a very, was very worthwhile. Over 60% of the people who took part in it were persons of color, and 2/3 identified themselves as women. And that was really, I'd say, a very surprising result. We kind of thought initially going into that, that once we started the Foundation Series, it would rather be rather tech-heavy, probably predominantly male, but that turned out not to be the case at all. We never really targeted tech when the Startup 425 Foundation Series. It was industry agnostic, really anyone who had any idea, if you want to be a dog walker, you want to open a pizza shop, whatever you wanted to do, you could take part in this. And I think really, what was really gratifying is that it was a very diverse audience, lots of different ideas coming to the table. Building on that success in 2017, we continue to work, Startup 425 Foundations for 2018. We're now holding 52 workshops across all of the five cities, so a significant increase already. 80%, and we're sort of halfway through this now for the spring series, there's both a spring and a fall, so we're halfway through the spring. About 80% of the respondents say that the workshops are either very or extremely helpful, so that is a great trend to keep going on. Again, over half of the respondents are either a person of color, and then, again, more than 2/3 of the registrants are women as well. So we're continuing that trend of really great diversity in this. And what's very interesting is about 1/3 of the registrants make $50,000 or less per year. So now we're starting to see not just gender and ethnic differences or makeups in these classes, but also in terms of income as well. So we're again hitting really a very strong cross-section. One of the things that's also been growing as well is the website for Startup 425, increased the user count by almost 200% year over year from 2017 to 2018. So again, very good results there as well. Turning to Global Passport, that is a, is a project that's really designed to help entrepreneurs and, again, startups really learn about the benefits of thinking about marketing and selling internationally at the very beginning of when they start their company. And the reason for this is really that a lot of companies, when they start, when they, you know, start selling and start to grow, they really don't look at the domestic, the international market as an opportunity to grow their sales. I mean, it's very easy to sell locally, the US is an enormous market, the Seattle region is an enormous market, so there isn't a lot of incentive to sell internationally. But in many ways, it's very beneficial for companies. One, it diversifies their revenue stream and their customer base, and the second is, it keeps them very globally competitive, so they can always stay on the, on the cutting edge of what their services or products that they're delivering. In terms of the testing, also the Small Business Development Center Advisor, I'll kind of brief that a bit more, but essentially that's an advisor for the East Side who works primarily not with startups, but really sort of smaller businesses who are kind of in later stages of development or have been around a while, to really kind of help them refine their business model and continue to grow their company. So we're testing two new projects for this year. One is the finance workshops. This is sort of the more, I guess, advanced course, maybe the 200 series for Startup 425 Foundations. It's really geared towards those entrepreneurs who are looking to be in the process of capital formation to start their business, so looking at different alternatives for financing, like a small business administration loan, private loans from banks, maybe they're looking at venture capital funding, that type of thing. So different opportunities for them for different financing mechanisms and what they need to do to be ready when they either go to the bank or go talk to venture fund managers. And the last one is One Million Cups. This is actually an international program, it's run by the Kaufman Foundation out of Kansas City, Missouri. It's a very, Kaufman is a very well-known nonprofit organization, their focus solely is on entrepreneurship. And One Million Cups does is it basically is a very, it's a forum essentially where you have two startups come and they talk about what they went through to start their company, some of the pitfalls, some of the great opportunities that came a result of it. And it's really to kind of essentially increase that networking, increase that ecosystem within the startup and entrepreneurial community on the East Side. They're held at WeWork in downtown Bellevue on the second Wednesday of the month at the eye-popping 7:30 AM. So if you happen to be downtown Bellevue, near WeWork, head on up to the fifth floor, you can grab a cup of coffee and listen to a couple startups and learn more about how their business is doing. So we talked about the regional nature of Startup 425, and I think this is really very important to emphasize, because in many ways, businesses, as Jen alluded to, really don't see boundaries like, you know, people who work in city government do. For them, it's just another road, it's just, it's just a line that they're crossing, they don't see the differences. And this is one of the big points of feedback we received when we started talking to small businesses and entrepreneurs early on as we started to put together this program, is that, you know, they really believe that for it to be successful, it needs to be very regional in nature. So that was very, the very intentional outreach that we did to Jen and Keith and others within the five cities, is like, let's put this together on a regional basis, and let's look at that opportunity to grow all of the business and entrepreneurial climate in the East Side. So again, keeping with that, that theme, we worked with the King County Library System, so all of the workshops are held at the libraries in our respective five cities. That's been a super great venue, it's very accessible, it's very easy to get to, there's great parking, so it makes it very, very, very easy for people to come here. We also work with SCORE, which is part of the Small Business Administration, again, a national actor who focuses solely on small business. So they're a huge partner in really bringing together these workshops. Actually, a SCORE mentor or advisor is one that's usually teaching each of the courses, so that's a great partnership that goes on there. And again, you know, we highlight the different businesses in the area, we highlight different coworking spaces, if people want to kind of move into that next step in all of the cities so they can understand, yeah, there are options, other than, you know, kind of working out your basement or working out your bedroom, you know, go to a coworking space, that might be a better opportunity for you. In terms of the Small Business Development Center, again, this was another sort of pilot project we started two years ago in partnership with One Redmond. One Redmond, for those who don't know, is basically a public-private partnership with the City of Redmond and the, I think, formerly the Redmond Chamber of Commerce, basically, to do more of an intentional focus on economic development. We worked with Washington State University, which has the contract to do small business development centers throughout Washington State, and we hired an advisor, this is Greg Paley here on the, on the slide. Like I said, it was a two-year pilot, Greg has now moved on to bigger and better things, and so we're looking, we're in the process of hiring a new advisor. But I have to say, his results, you know, for those two years were really quite stellar. He worked with over 169 businesses. Now, these are businesses who are not startup, they've either been around a while as a small business or may, may have just emerged from the startup phase. He really would provide very unique consulting services to them, so help them with their, like their financial model, help them if they want to scale and grow their company, you know, help them with site selection, those types of things, it was sort of a wide portfolio, but really very intentional types of support that was given to companies. So through working with 169 businesses, he provided over 2,500 hours of client advising. That yielded 75 new jobs, 7 million in new capital formation, so pretty astounding there, and helped increase business sales by over $5 million. So this is a really, it's a great program, we think it's one that can be definitely scaled throughout the East Side, and we'd like to at least bring on one, a replacement for Greg as an SBDC advisor, but potentially one more as well, because we think the demand is there. In fact, Greg had to actually turn clients away because the demand was so high. So again, a great program as well. So the regional results, well, overall, I think the takeaway for the past sort of year and a half of running Foundations and Startup 425 as a whole is that participants are extremely pleased with all the workshops. We're seeing really robust numbers across the board, again, sort of 82% believe that the workshops or the support they receive from Startup 425 are extremely helpful for drilling down to Issaquah. So for this year, there's gonna be 10 workshops here, there's gonna be four in the spring, so those are ongoing right now. Those are actually sold out, so we have 30 registrants per workshop, so we have about 120 registrants total for Issaquah, so that's phenomenal numbers. We're gonna be increasing that to six this fall because we think the demand is there. And so again, I think those are really very positive results. Just kind of highlighting some of the ethnic makeup of the workshop participants, as you can see here, you know, really across the board, I think it really reflects the character and the nature of the East Side, as you all appreciate, you know, we've become, in Bellevue in particular, a majority-minority community, and we're seeing, you know, robust groups from across the world moving to the East Side. So again, I think this again sort of really reflects the type of makeup we have in our, in our community. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the gender distribution as well, overwhelmingly female, so that's really very positive again as well, so we're really excited to see that. So why do we think Startup 425 benefits Issaquah? You know, as Jen talked about, the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan, I think it really fits very well with that with supporting small businesses. And it's really, I think, a great service, again, it's low cost, it's low barrier of entry, it's very easy to get to, especially with the library system, I think it's a great, great program, makes it very accessible for everybody. And again, it's kind of drilling down into a bit more for everybody. And again, it's kind of drilling down into a bit more of the facts and figures from Issaquah. Again, 70% found it very helpful, extremely helpful to be here, and then year over year, again, increase in web traffic from Issaquah to the Star 425 website, either signing up for more foundation courses or just getting more information as a whole. So what is the future whole? Well, my history professor back at the UW used to say, what does this all mean? And back to some of your questions earlier, if you look at where job creation really happens in your community, about 80% of it comes from existing businesses or from new business startups. So a program like this, a program like Star 425 goes directly to creating business, creating jobs, creating opportunity in a local economy. So in that way, it's really, really positive. We think Star 425 has demonstrated, you know, success, and that there's a real need out there for these types of programs. Again, as we have moved from 2017 to 2018 by offering more courses, more workshops, you know, they're all full. Across the board, in every, every city that we've held this spring, they are full. And we're anticipating, as we even expand the number of workshops this fall, they will fill up as well. So again, really high demand out there. For the past two years, Star 425, again, through the generous, you know, support of the port and others, has cost about $60,000 to run, but as you've seen, we've touched probably at least well over 200 entrepreneurs throughout this. We're still tracking, you know, longitudinally what's going to happen with those entrepreneurs, how many are going to score for further mentoring, further business plan development, how many of those people then actually create their business by, you know, getting a business license, that type of thing. We're still kind of a bit early in the whole program to kind of truly understand the sort of the outcome-based impacts of this, but we think, again, it's very positive. As I mentioned before, the finance series is going to be launching in July, sort of the 200-level course for folks who want to, you know, get more practical skills on how to get their finance plans shaped up and get financing for this. So I think overall, we really believe that, you know, 425, Star 425 is really providing a great value for the community. We're super excited. Issaquah is a great partner in this, and we really think it can grow and scale quite a bit to meet the needs of the community. And so with that, thank you very much, and look forward to your questions.
Questions? Come on. Councilmember Hunt, I know you got questions.
Right. Thank you for your presentation. You touched on this, but I was wondering with the survey results, 106 survey respondents, and then 82% said workshop was extremely or very helpful. You mentioned that there will be some follow-up in terms of how many people actually go on to get business licenses and those sorts of things. I wondered, when was the survey conducted, and when do you expect to sort of start seeing if you can get some of that impact information as far as the follow-up to see how people are doing?
Yeah, so we actually survey after every workshop, basically. There's like a little piece of paper or a card, and then the registrants can fill that out and then leave it behind. But then we also do sort of a more intentional outreach at the end of the sort of full foundation workshop series to better understand, you know, how the registrants felt about the courses and the value they provided to them. So this, the 82% is largely based on 2017, a little bit of 2018, although, like I say, we're still kind of in the middle of the spring series right now. In terms of sort of the longitudinal impact of Star 425, that's something we're working on currently with SCORE right now, to basically understand how we can measure this. SCORE has strict confidentiality requirements, so like if Jen goes through the workshop, I can't sit there and track Jen, you know, through the whole lifecycle of her startup development. They can always say, well, you know, we can tell you, and they've told us this, that 18 entrepreneurs who went through the Star 425, the foundation course in 2017 are now talking with us. We don't, we can't know their names or names or companies or anything like that. But we do know that those 18 went to foundations and are now talking to SCORE about putting a business plan together. So that's, I mean, even in a relationship to 18 out of 200 or 150, it is not a very high percentage. That's still pretty good. That's 18, 18 people who are looking to start their own business. So we'll continue to sort of refine with SCORE how we can kind of track that, you know, and keeping, you know, respecting the confidentiality of the clients as well.
Okay. And is there a cost associated with these programs, the programs that are at the King County Library System?
Yeah, so there, in terms of the cost, I mean, there's a cost that, you know, we partially fund, Issaquah helps to fund as well, and then also the Port Grant funds, and that's a lot for like logistical things as well. But one, one of the great reasons we partner with the library system is because part of their mission is to really provide small business support throughout the King County. So for them, foundations is a great program to help meet that goal. So it's really a great working partnership. Again, these, the foundation courses are no cost.
Oh, so no cost to participants?
Yes. The finance series, however, will be a cost, because what we're looking at doing there is not only bringing in SCORE advisors to help, help teach that, we're also looking at bringing in private sector people. And the reason for that is, is because if you're a company that's looking at potentially venture capital funding, we want to really bring in someone who really understands that really well, in terms of like what you as an individual or as a business need to do to prepare your company to go after that type of venture capital funding. So that will have a cost to it. But we think that it's, it'll be quite minimal, I mean, and it'll have much more value than, you know, what the cost will be.
Okay. And these are regional results, and it sounds like the presentation was regional with the five cities. Do you, do you have information or some general information about what Issaquah, what the breakdown is in terms of what Issaquah's involvement for participants is?
Yeah, I could go back and run the numbers and kind of see what the aggregate number is, and then break it down specifically for Issaquah. We can, we can definitely run that as well.
Just, just wondering what the, oh, yeah.
There's a little bit there. And those are sort of like, you know, just sort of rough numbers, but again, you know, in terms of workshops, I mean, Issaquah's been increasing from two in 2017 to four this spring, and then again, we're looking at six this fall because of the demand there. And then web sessions, that's basically how many hits from people specifically in Issaquah that are using the Star 425 website. Now, that, that kind of probably misses a lot, so if I'm working at Microsoft, for example, but I live in Issaquah, that won't be reflected up there.
Okay. You might have said, how many, how large are the workshops?
They're generally about 30 registrants, so we keep them, you know, fairly manageable. And the ones here in Issaquah are sold out.
My last question is, you mentioned with the Small Business, Small Business Development Center, I think, that there was some tracking as far as jobs created, and I was wondering about the methodology for how you, how you track that.
Yeah, so Small Business Development Center, again, is a program of the Small Business Administration. In fact, that's the, sort of the, SBA is the umbrella organization for SBDC. Part of the metrics that Greg has to report up, both to Washington State, which runs the program here in the state of Washington, but then also that is fed up to the SBA back in Washington DC, is how many jobs are created through the advising services an advisor gives. So that's the exact metric they have to track, as well as capital formation and sales increases. So they have to kind of show that all, because SBA then packages that up, and so when they make their federal funding requests to the government, they use those metrics to kind of show that they provide value to local businesses.
Thanks.
Councilmember Vatise?
Thank you for your presentation. That's a lot of great information. The SBDC advisor, Greg Paley, that, that looks like that was a two-year pilot, and it was just Bellevue and Redmond. Is that right?
Right.
And so now, would that be expanding over to Issaquah in the future, or you're looking for new?
Yeah, so, so the SBDC advisor serves all of the east side, so he, you know, he worked with clients over here in Issaquah as well. It was a pilot in terms of the city of Bellevue and One Redmond helped fund the SBDC advisor with support from Washington State University as well.
Okay. And now he's moved on, and so there will be new people moving into that role?
Yeah, we're actually going through the hiring process. In fact, I actually got an email update today, though they received nine, nine applicants, and they've gone through the initial screening, so we'll be doing the interviews probably in the next couple of weeks.
Great. And does this group partner at all with educational establishments, groups that are, maybe that people are looking to expand or start their own business? I was just wondering.
No, that's a great question.
A little bit more about partnerships.
Yeah, actually Greg did some work over in Seattle for Comotion, which is sort of the startup space at the University of Washington. And so he would actually help those companies. Some of the companies were actually on the east side, but they were over at Comotion to just network or just be sort of in a space essentially where they can help, help grow their business and explore new ideas. So there is a partnership there as well. And he has been, we started initially to work with the Global Innovation Exchange, see if there's some opportunities there to bring these advisory services, you know, to students who may be interested in starting their own business as they move through that program as well.
Thanks.
Okay, James, thank you very much. That was great.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. I only have one slide tonight, so I'm going to make it count. A couple, a couple quick updates on some of the programs that we're working on. The tourism and the DMO, which you're all very familiar with, is moving forward. That panel has been chosen. Kathy McCory will be representing the chamber. Will Parkinson and Quinn Pham will represent the two hotels. The mayor has selected Jeff Walker to represent, to be the mayor's representative. And then Dia has chosen Robin Kelly as their representative. I sent a due to poll out this morning. It should be meeting either next week or the following week to start that process to get the Board of Developers developed. And I would expect that board to be in place by the end of July, so moving forward. The Innovation Partnership Zone for Sports Medicine, this is something that Jen spent a lot of time on in forming her working group and her committee, and it was put on hold mainly due to a lack of funding from the state. However, moving forward, we've been awarded, the city of Issaquah, through the Department of Commerce, $50,000 to host a sports medicine conference in some capacity. We don't know the details of what that'll look like, but it's time to circle back to the Innovation Partnership Zone and to our branding or our messaging. So we've got some port money and economic development money set aside for that. So I've formed that working group. They should be meeting in the next several weeks, and then they will form the committee, the representatives from Swedish, proliance, chiropractic, physical therapy, and then we'll start to look at what they want to do in terms of that conference and what we're missing, and that'll start to form. So big project, looking forward to working on it. It's in its early phases, but it's circling back. We don't have to start from scratch. Like I said, Jen and her committee did a lot of work on it already, so we'll just be tweaking some of the business plan and the working groups, some ideas and concepts. Formula businesses, this is an early discussions, there's been talk in the community and from Dia, Downtown Issaquah Association. A formula business is another word for a chain store, banning them in some capacity. In Old Town, there's several different ways that this can be done. It can be done by a percentage, it can be done based on size, it can be done on a case-by-case basis. It's, like I said, it's just something I wanted to get out on the table. It hasn't moved forward. The Planning and Policy Commission is the one that will be kind of moving that forward and doing more research. Like I said, the economic development team, we're in our early stages, it's just doing research. It has been done. It can be found all over the country in different states. It's pretty prevalent in California. There's two cities in Washington that have done it. And we can come back to that if you have more questions on it. Seattle outreach in regards of the strategic plan, going back to our targeted approach. So when the head tax was, was going to be imposed, I started to look at things that fall into our strategic plan in our economic sectors, outdoor recreation companies, sports medicine companies, service providers, and tech companies, and I started to look at which ones were in Seattle, and I started to create a list. And I was just going to make a few phone calls and send out a few feelers. But with that, the news today, was it today? The news today, that's kind of gone away. But that's sort of what we're doing in economic development, right? That's part of what we do, and that's part of our strategic plan, is to recruit those companies. But again, as Jen mentioned earlier, we're not using a shotgun approach. We're not trying to be everything to everybody. We wouldn't want to try to go after manufacturing or food processing, but those things that fit into our targeted sectors, absolutely would pursue them. So like I said, that's been put on the back burner and probably will go away. The transit-oriented development, just want to touch base on it. If you have any questions, let us know. No, ask Jen. And the Gilman Boulevard Outreach Project, we really got out and hit the pavement to get in front of those companies, to get their, to get them to take the survey to attend the workshops this week, and then the open house that's coming in July. I want to thank Ashwin, did he leave? Yeah, he got out and hit a lot of those businesses with me, dropping off flyers and talking to businesses. And I want to thank Connie Marsh, she got out and did some of that outreach as well for us. And together, we all got to 120 businesses, which is pretty impressive. That's a lot of businesses to visit in a short period of time in less than two weeks. I don't have a slide on it, but I presented at the Port of Seattle Commissioners Meeting today on the Port Grant and what we're doing with those dollars in 2018. So if you don't mind, I'd like to give you a quick update on that. The first one would be Startup 425, which we just went into depth, but we use Port Grant dollars to help fund some of those, some of those projects. We have money set aside for IPZ and for the marketing and the branding and the messaging for 2018. We have money set aside and general fund for tourism. So there's, in the way that I, we applied for the grant, is we said, we're either going to use it for branding, or we'll use it for the startup for the DMO, or we'll use it for wayfinding. So if we get to branding this year, there is port money set aside for it, but if we don't, we might look at doing something like a wayfinding study. And then we've used some Port Grant money for our website enhancement. We've, Jen and I've been working on building a data center, making our website more robust for businesses and for site selectors, anybody that's looking into economics. And then the Chamber University courses, which I've completed, so we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce, and they did six different workshops, and they called it the Four Rs Revelations Retention Regulations and Human Resources. I attended most of those, they were well-attended. They got those topics, they received those topics from doing business outreach and from our business survey and from us talking to businesses and saying, what do they want more education on? So those are the topics that they focused on. So that's a quick Port Grant update. Questions?
I'm going to start today. So what do we expect to be coming back to council in the next six months, based on your initiatives, so?
Branding could be a possibility. The IPC and marketing. Website enhancement complete, Chamber University is complete.
Diet laws for the DMO.
Diet laws for the DMO, of course.
You know, you're waiting for that one.
No, I was actually waiting, I was waiting for TOD.
Setting it up. Oh, and TOD.
And actually, you'll hear from Gilman, sorry.
Yeah. So, so a lot, a lot of the stuff that you're working on, I mean, is going to be feeding back. We're going to see you again.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Great. Thank you. Oh, almost forgot. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Chair of the Economic Vitality Commission, Jeff Howlett.
I can, I'm not bashful, I can introduce myself. I'm Jeff Howlett. I am the Chair of the Economic Vitality Commission. As Jen talked about, the commission was established in 2012. Thank you. So that was just six years ago. What I want to impress upon you with this first slide is just, you know, give you some basic understanding of who comprises the commission. Seven of the 10 are, have been on the commission for about a year now or less. So, and I have been the chair for a grand total of two months, three?
You're the one in 2016, right?
I've been on the commission since 2016. I've been the chair for the last couple of months. But what's great is, I think, through recruitment, or maybe we've been lucky with the kinds of folks that have wanted to participate and become members of the commission, we've really got quite a diverse crew. And in the two years I've been, I think this is probably the most diverse commission I've, I've seen so far. And when I say diverse, I mean across a lot of different perspectives. All the, all the diversity angles you can think of, from experience levels, we even have a millennial, which is pretty cool. But sex, age, where people have been working, large corporations, couple of small business owners, couple of semi-retired, trying to be retired folks that their small businesses keep dragging them back into. So I just, and across a lot of different industries, you know, real estate development, technology. We have folks that are working for Costco, we have folks that are working at Microsoft. So it's, it's a great commission to kind of look at as a pretty good cross-representation of what we think of when we think of economic vitality and how Issaquah can, you know, up its game there, so to speak. So it's been pretty good. how Issaquah can, you know, up its game there, so to speak. So it's been pretty good. So our focus for 2018, so the moratorium had an impact, like everybody else, particularly on economic vitality, but thinking about it. But as far as our focus goes, Jen and Tim did a great job talking about business retention and expansion, our efforts there. What's interesting, though, and I think the point wasn't made strong enough, though, is just the mere outreach and the effort of establishing communication with businesses and to the city makes businesses feel like this is a place that cares, and I'm here. They want to stay here. It's very hard for business to get up and leave. So when we say business retention, you know, it's not easy for a business to make a choice to leave where they are. But having that communication, I think, is super important. And I think the team has done a great job in some of their initiatives they've taken across that. The thing that we've kind of come down to as far as 2018 for the rest of the summer, really, is updating the strategic plan. So Jen mentioned 2015 to 2018 was the range of years for the previous strategic plan. Now we're looking at 2019 to 2022. And what we've started to talk about is paralleling the work or collaborating with the work that the city is doing around their strategic plan. So instead of us going off in a bubble or whatever and having something produced that's kind of maybe potentially disconnected, instead of doing that, we want to be much tighter connection with the city's plan, the city's strategic plan, that that work is just now undergoing. I think some of you guys were at the charrette, which is pretty fun. It's a new word. How many learned a new word with charrette? Okay, just me. So as we're doing that work, we're going to ensure that we work with the city because, believe it or not, our charter, and a couple of you guys mentioned this, our charter is, if you look at our charter, a couple of, the first couple of bullet points is blah, 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 to achieve economic goals adopted by the city council. Doesn't say by the mayor. So we're actually looking towards the city council as well as to help define what are Issaquah's economic goals. Okay? And then lastly, this ties back to the first slide about the people on the commission and our experience, some of the things we can help with. Not that we're asking to, you know, a lot of projects, because I think there's incredible value to become very crisp and clear and focus on, you know, two, three things. It's been said, right, you have more than three priorities. You actually don't have any priorities. So we're not looking for a laundry list of projects to help with. But when we think about economic vitality and what businesses look for in a community when thinking about where to put a location or start a business, it's, you know, I just spent an hour learning all about the Parks Plan. Parks are important, right? Everything on that list is important about why people want to work and live in Issaquah. So some of the things that we think we could help with, we've heard about updating the sign code, you know. A lot of times, we think government should get out of the way of business. We actually think about, well, how does government partner with the business, right? So little things, just as updating sign codes. That can wreak havoc with a business. I've got a shop in Burien, and it took me a month to figure out how to get a sign that lives within their code. We don't want that here, right? Nobody wants that anywhere. So just little things. So leverage us, if you will, the experience we have, some of the perspectives we have. It could be helpful. Any questions?
I have a couple of quick ones. I have a couple of quick ones. So what are you working on right now? What's EVC focused on right today?
Yeah. So for the rest, it's really these initiatives here around business retention and expansion and whatever Tim and Jen ask us to work on. The second thing is development of the strategic plan. We're kind of, as I said, there's seven out of 10 of us that are new. We're kind of taking a step back and saying, hey, what's the city now? And what the council focusing on for a strategic plan, what's in their, what, through their process, what can we learn and incorporate?
And then I'm going to steal a line from Jen. What does economic vitality mean to you?
It's, I'm actually, it's pretty simple. It's a place for economic, when we, I kind of focus on the word economic. It's a place where businesses want to be and where people want to work. I don't, I think you can pull into that everything from families to education to recreation to affordable housing, whether it's, you know, transportation, I can go to the laundry list, but it's where businesses want to be and it's where people want to work. I think people coming to a location to work, that is, it creates a sense of life in the community. Businesses that want to be here, it creates a brand for the city, if you will. There's a lot of ways of creating a brand around the city, but what is it that Issaquah is thought of when businesses are looking, where should I be? Or what should I, where should I expand? Where should I invest in? That's where Issaquah needs to make it smart.
Anything else? Ryan and Nick.
So I had a question going way back. This may go to Keith or Jen, but just in terms of, but Jeff, I'd like to hear your answer. In terms of the size of the commission, it was, when it first started, it was one of the larger commissions. So do you feel like the number, you talked about the diversity and how that is really working well with all the different viewpoints. But how do you feel about the size of the commission? I was just curious.
It's probably, it was 10 people. It's probably appropriate. I don't, I think regardless of size, it's a matter of participation and effectiveness. Like, you know, if you have 10 people, but only four consistently show up, then having 10 people isn't really helpful, right? Whereas if you have 10 people, but they all have a very important viewpoint to be heard, I think that's the right size. It looks like Keith might have a better answer.
There was nothing wrong with that answer, but the one thing that you may not know, Jeff, is so we purposely tinkered with the number. It used to be 12, 12 members, but three of them were alternates. And as we talked about updating kind of the structure of the commission, what we really decided was, let's make it a little bit smaller, because at times, it seemed like a gaggle of people. So we reduced it to 10, but we also decided that it really didn't make sense to have alternates, because, and there's just a lot of baggage around alternates on our commissions. And so we made that decision to get rid of the alternates, but to reduce the number to 10. And I think it actually is working really well.
Great. I was curious about that.
One thing about that also is, this past six months, we've had a member of the youth board participate on our commission, and that's not part of the number. But that was refreshing. And he was a high school kid, right, interested, bright young man, and volunteered to come and be part of the board. His feedback to us was extremely enlightening for him. And so we were right now considering about like, well, should this be something we continue to do or not?
One more question. So with the IPZ and sports medicine, the word that was being used was clustering, and is that still sort of the focus for sports medicine and the IPZ? But is it also a focus around tourism, around outdoor recreation as well?
I'm going to give my answer, and then I think these guys probably will have a follow-up. But from my perspective, we can have a lot of different initiatives in a lot of different areas. I think part of the strategic plan process is going to help us focus a bit more and become a bit more crisp on those questions you're asking. IPZ, from my perspective, was, you know, now it has funding, and of course, if you follow the money, that gets traction, right? So if there's some funding behind it around that kind of stuff, then that helps. But I think through the strategic plan process, that'll help us become maybe a bit more focused and crisp on what is it, the things we're going to be focusing on.
That's a great answer. I guess I would just add that the tourism and outdoor recreation businesses were mentioned in our strategic plan as it being important. And with the new effort with the DMO, it made sense to kind of also focus a little bit on that. So it's not that we are steering away from sports medicine or changing where we, you know, we as a strategic plan in a city thought was where our strengths are. So we felt that that was a good opportunity to put a little bit more effort into bringing businesses here that could benefit the tourism efforts as well. So.
Great. Thank you. And I would just, I think that it's great that there, you know, the efforts are condensed, and also that you'll have an opportunity to find out, you know, where everything is heading with the strategic plan for the city. As someone who sat on the day one as a commissioner on economic vitality years ago, that was what we were working on the first day I came in, was the strategic plan. So that'll be really great to see that updated. Thanks.
Councilmember Hunt?
Well, thank you so much for coming and speaking to the committee. I think that there's a lot of value when commissions come and speak on behalf of the commissions. And the input from commissions is so important to so many of the decisions we make. So thank you. I also liked hearing about the youth board member came and participated in your discussions, because I think there's a lot of, a lot to be said for commissions and the boards working together and sort of seeing each other's perspectives and then bringing that joint perspective to council. And I also appreciated hearing about the alternates and the approach that was taken and that that is working out, because I think that as commissions change and as the needs of the city change and as the community involvement changes, it's good to be flexible with the way that those commissions are forming. And so hopefully, commissions can learn from one another, not only in what they're doing in terms of their work plan, but also in how they're procedurally, how they operate. So that was all really great. And I do have two questions. So the first question is, I think I'm a little confused about the economic development strategic plan versus the city's strategic plan. So could you explain a little bit about it with your, with the commission's work? You're going to be working on both, and how do you see them tying together or working on the economic development one first? And then could you explain that a little bit?
Sure. The thought process to date has been that this is a parallel exercise, if you will. And it's assuming that the mayor and the council is going to be including various commissions, various department leads as part of their process as they're developing the city's strategic plan. Or we can just Elbor a way in. I don't know. One way or the other. I think to do both in silos is probably a common sense mistake. So we're not going to, you know, there's no disagreement there. So it's a work in parallel and to look at where, you know, part of our charter is to say, if we think of something's missing, you know, it's our responsibility to say so, and to help bridge and connect the dots, if you will. But if something is, also, there may be policy written down, we may have a tweak to it, or a suggested tweak, or suggested change, just as you do. So it's really a parallel, and we're going to just follow the same timeline that the city has.
Okay. Thank you for that. The last thing is the leveraging EVC slide. I think it's your last, the last slide. Are the, so these are, are these on the work plan, or these are suggestions for things, sort of looking for guidance from council?
These are not, not all of these are on the work plan, right?
City's work plan or EVC's?
EVC. Okay. So I'm just wondering, from our committee's standpoint, are you looking for guidance as far as how to, leveraging, what are the feedback on these, or these are just sort of thoughts on what EVC could work on?
So I think, and part of it's timing. So when things happen, because they, when we prioritize and talked about what 2018 was going to look like, the business retention stuff was the real focus, and then there were these other projects. And so this is kind of a list of those other projects. Now, the city's branding may not be starting until towards the end of the year. The sign code, the same. The transportation board was going to be formed. We thought there was some way we could support that, obviously not being the transportation board, but providing input. So all of these, the EVC may work on, and sometime it may be 2019 and beyond. But if there is something, I think it's a two-part question to council, is there another topic that you have heard about in your other experience that we should be thinking about providing some input on? Or if one of these you believe is more important, that would be great to hear as well. But I think these are some of the topics identified. All of these are within our, I think, I think all of them are in our strategic plan. So just, so it isn't kind of a massive brainstorm. It's more of a refined list.
Anything else? Oh, I have some other things.
So just one thought on the last slide. And I know that the economic development department works with some of the groups regionally, but I just didn't see that there. So as things are changing with Rita and that kind of thing, just how does that regional piece fit in in terms of potentially attracting employers that might come through those groups?
Yes. Yes. We will be very active, as we can be.
It's good feedback.
The regional organization. And actually, James here has been involved in that effort as the regional effort and very, you know, working with us in the East Side Coalition as well as living here at Issaquah. He's not going to, he's going to make sure that we're up to date if we've missed anything along the way. But that's an organization that we're picking off next month, and we're excited to see that progress, because that is something that we haven't had here in the region, to really have a strong organization representing the region for recruitment and marketing, which is important, because again, people may not come to Seattle for Issaquah, but they will come to Seattle and then learn about the region from there.
Councilmember Hunt?
I have a comment on the, on this list. So with the transportation, I understand that that was meant to be potentially working with the Transportation Advisory Board, which has not yet been formed, which will be formed. And just comparing that list to the list that Tim presented, there is also the transit oriented development on that list. So that's an ongoing initiative of the Economic Development Department. I think that's, so that's on that slide. That, I think, is something that there is going to be a lot of discussion on, and it would be good to have the various commissions' feedback. So my input there would be that that's something that I would, I would think could be.
So I would, I would have a question for the council to consider, maybe. And this is just off on the fly. Transportation is a regional problem. It's not an Issaquah problem, right? I would say that. Doesn't mean we can ignore it. But when we think about why businesses want to be in certain places, we would like to be able to emphasize those things that differentiate Issaquah. Our traffic here doesn't differentiate us from anyone. So I think the work is important, but from what we focus on and why businesses want to be here, if there is something we can say that would help Issaquah differentiate itself, it'd be obviously pretty beneficial. Some of the things we focus on as well is like within a five-mile radius of here. like, within a five-mile radius of here, you have some of the most educated people in the world here in various industries. You have one of the world's leading retailers across the street over here. Some of the things that differentiate this area from an attractiveness perspective to a business, I think we could do a much better job about emphasizing and branding. And that's part of all that work on the list there.
It's also establishing that, the value proposition that we started this discussion with. I mean, it's, your word differentiation was, it was right, and that's what makes the value proposition for Issaquah different than, well, almost as good as Bellevue, different than Bellevue.
What? Bellevue?
Than Bellevue. All right. Thank you, Jeff. Anything else? Are you guys done?
No. I'm kind of a wild card, too, because I bring in a lot of big hairy ideas that'll never get off the ground, and I am not going to bring them up here. But anytime you guys want to sit down with a cup of coffee with me, let me know.
Do it. Okay, the next meeting of Services and Safety is currently scheduled for July 10th at 6:30 PM here in council chambers, and with that, we're adjourned.